Okay.
You saw my note about, one second. You saw my note about Director Keegan and Director Kremen?
Oh, yeah, they're not. Yeah. But the other folks on? Okay, sorry to introduce them. All right. Good evening, everyone. A special joint meeting with the Sunny, Sunny, the Sunnyvale City Council, uh, and Valley Water, uh, is called to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Director Shua?
Here.
Director Keegan is absent. Director Kremen is absent and will be joining in a little while. Director Lazard?
Here.
Director Santos?
Yes.
He's present. Director Varela?
Here.
Chair Estramera?
Hi.
We have a quorum present?
Uh, thank you. So I'd like to turn, uh, turn it over to Mayor Larry Klein, so that Sunnyvale City Clerk may call their roll.
Thank you, Chair.
Good evening, Mayor Klein.
It's been a few years since we've had this meeting. Uh, but I just want to say thank you for, for resuming these discussions and especially during difficult times. Uh, let me go ahead and, um, pass it to the city clerk to, to do call, a call to order for, and roll call for our council members.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hendricks.
Attending.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Melton.
Present.
Councilmember Fong.
Present.
Councilmember Sisneros.
Present.
Councilmember Dean?
Here.
Seven present participating.
Thank you. I'll pass it back to the Chair.
Thank you. Uh, would everyone, uh, please stand and join us for the pledge? Uh, Director Santos can lead us.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Director Santos. Uh, good evening. My name is Tony Estramera, Chair of the Valley Water Board of Directors. Uh, on behalf of our board, I'd like to welcome the Sunnyvale City Council, uh, and also your staff. Um, thank you especially, uh, for joining us, uh, this evening. We have a long history of meeting jointly to discuss topics of mutual interest between our organizations and how we can partner on important issues to the benefit of our communities. And even though the pandemic posed a lot, a lot of challenges, um, over this last year and a half, I'm, uh, pleased that we're both committed to continuing this tradition so that we can best serve our mutual constituents. Despite the challenges of operating during a pandemic, Valley Water has continued moving forward on our projects and was able to mobilize quickly to take action on the drought. Our priorities remain focused, uh, on providing safe, clean, and reliable water, advancing and building flood protection projects, and carrying out our environmental stewardship activities. However, our most urgent priority is helping our communities maintain a reliable supply of water throughout this drought emergency. We'd like to thank the Sunnyvale City Council for the water conservation actions that you have put into place. Valley Water will continue to assist you as we work to secure emergency water supplies. We also continue to bolster our drought resilience through innovative technology such as recycled water so that Valley Water, so that Silicon Valley is prepared for more frequent and more severe droughts that are now, of course, caused by climate change. Valley Water cannot achieve the region's water sustainability on our own, and of course, that's why, uh, we're committed to working very closely with you. Given that, I want to personally thank the council and your staff for making time to meet and for your efforts coordinating the presentations that we will see here today. Let me also acknowledge the work of our Valley Water staff. Uh, that is much, much appreciated. I'll now turn to Mayor Klein for any introductory remarks that he wishes to make, and then we'll have, uh, we'll go to introductions. Mayor Klein?
Sure. Thank you very much, Chair. And, you know, it's been quite a few years since we had our last meeting and the world has definitely changed since then. Uh, we're doing these meetings remote. It looks like you are at least doing some, uh, in-person meetings now. Uh, but, you know, when we last met, we were still meeting in person and, you know, remote meetings are at least a way of life for the short term and probably for the long term. Uh, but it's good to resume these discussions, you know, especially in light of these times of drought that we're currently within in. You know, water is a precious resource in the valley, uh, and California overall. And I think, you know, it's, it's important that these meetings are, are really, um, critical to look at the partnership between our two organizations, making sure that each of us is, you know, breaking through any barriers that we have. But from, from a trying to path, um, set a path forward, it's, it's critical that we make sure that we're both on the same page and figuring out what we can do to be mutually beneficial for the, for the two organizations. So, so with that, you know, I'll, I'll let, I'll, I'll go ahead and introduce each of the council, my council colleagues. Um, I'll have, I'll have them basically say how long we've been on council and, um, I think that's a quick, at least a quick introduction from our side. So I'm, you know, Sunnyvale Mayor Larry Klein. I've been on council now just over five years, just a few weeks over five years. And it was, uh, directly, became the first directly elected mayor last November. Uh, next up is Vice Mayor Hendricks.
Hello, this is Glenn Hendricks. I'm the Vice Mayor. I've been on council for about seven and a half years and I also sit on VTA as the, and I'm currently the Chair of VTA.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson?
Hello, Gustav Larson. I too have been on council seven and a half years and I also sit on the Vasca Board of Directors where I'm the Chair. Thank you.
Councilmember Melton?
Thank you, Mayor. Russ Melton, Sunnyvale City Council member for five and a half years, was re-elected to represent Sunnyvale District Four, Southeast Sunnyvale, uh, last year. Uh, and I serve, um, LaFco and have had the honor of serving on LaFco, the number of the Valley Water Board of Directors members over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fong?
Yes, hi, everyone, and thank you for having this meeting. Uh, reaching towards the end of my first term, uh, at the end of next year. So really looking forward to this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sisneros?
Hello, everyone, um, and thank you for having this meeting. I'm very excited to learn more about this partnership and be part of this going forward. Um, I was elected in November of 2020 to represent District Two, which is the downtown area of Sunnyvale.
And finally, Councilmember Dean?
Thank you. Hi, uh, you'll have to forgive me for having my camera off. I was having some wifi issues. Uh, if my voice starts sounding robotic, you'll have to let me know, but I think it's working for now. Uh, but my name is Omar Dean. I've been on the council, uh, along with Councilmember Sisneros since November of 2020, so reaching about our ten-month mark.
Thank you very much. And with that, uh, I'll pass it back to the Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Vice Chair, um, is, is not here yet, uh, and then, uh, so I'll call on, um, starting with, uh, Director Varela.
Good evening, Mayor Klein and council members from Sunnyvale. I am John Varela. I represent District One, which is the single largest of the seven districts in the Valley Water, from the eastern foothills of San Jose over the Santa Teresa foothill into the beautiful Coyote Valley, south into the city of Morgan Hill, where I served as mayor a few years back, uh, down to San Martin and the city of Gilroy. It's a real pleasure to be with you tonight. I've been on the Valley Water Board of Directors. I'm the newbie. I've been there six years. So I'm still learning. I have a lot to learn and so I could teach all of you.
Thank you. Um, Director Keegan is, uh, is on vacation. She's on a wonderful cruise. So we'll go next to Director Santos.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Klein and council. Nice to be working with you. We just saw, uh, a couple of you at the recycling committee. It was a very good meeting. Uh, Richard Santos, District Three, honored to represent Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, Alviso, Melpitas, and all of Berriessa to McKee Road. It's been an honor and I've been here twenty years and I enjoyed every day of it.
Thank you. Director Linda Lazard?
Good morning, Mayor Klein. It's good morning to me. Good afternoon, Mayor Klein and members of the council. Uh, nice to see some of the council members who I've served on other boards with. Uh, I represent District Four, which is, uh, all of the city of Campbell, uh, parts of Almondin Valley, uh, the Cambrian area, and parts of Lowerland. I'm in my eleventh of twelve years.
Thank you. Director Naixue?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, uh, Mayor Klein, Vice Mayor Hendricks, and, uh, members of the, uh, couns, City Council. Uh, thank you for coming to, uh, tonight's meeting. My name is Naixue. I represent District Five, uh, which includes, uh, Saratoga, Cupertino, West San Jose, and, uh, half of Sunnyvale. That's the Sunnyvale south of, um, Central, uh, Central Expressway. Um, and looking forward to a product meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. And for me, I've, this is my twenty-sixth year of service. It's the fourth time I've served as Chair. Um, I represent, uh, District Six, which is basically, um, south of downtown San Jose, most of the east side, and the Franklin McKenley area. Now I'd like to, uh, open the public comment item and direct, uh, anyone wishing to address, uh, the members of the board or members of the city council, um, to address us at this point on any issue that's not on our agenda this evening. Do we have any requests for a public comment?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I have a Mr. Bruce Hane?
Yes, Mr. Mr. Hane?
Okay, I'm unmuting. Are you able to hear me?
We can hear you, sir.
Good evening. Don't know if the camera's working or not.
Oh, okay.
Great. So this comment is in fact about water. It's primarily for the Sunnyvale City Council members.
Yes.
Um, my name is Bruce Hahn. I live in one of the townhome complexes in Sunnyvale. It was built in the nineteen seventies and we have central water metering for our complex. So of course, central metering means that nobody here in our complex actually receives an individual water bill. So nobody has a direct financial incentive to conserve water. So if I waste water, I'm basically spending somebody else's money. It increases the bills of my neighbors and it gets rolled into the Homeowners Association dues. So in July of this year, I investigated whether it would be possible for us to actually install per-residence water meters and do individual billing. Uh, when I asked about this, the Sunnyvale Utility Billing Department replied that the city will not manage the billing for us if we were to install per-home meters. So even if a townhome wants to do the right thing by rolling out per-home water meters, we apparently can't do it because the city will not send the bills. I was very surprised at that. So I have two requests to the city. First, if such a policy does exist that will not do billing for townhomes that add meters, please change that policy so we can do the right thing. Uh, and second, I would suggest an incentive program or just pass a law for existing construction that requires all townhomes and condos to add per-unit water meters. So I'm aware that new construction probably already requires this. Legacy construction like ours built in the seventies probably does not require it presently. I actually checked, um, my Homeowners Association dues and it turns out about twenty-five percent of what I'm paying to my Homeowners Association each month is just for water, which is crazy when we have all kinds of grounds, buildings and grounds and reserves and so forth. But I can't do anything to reduce that amount on water spending because I'm basically paying for my neighbors' collective water use. So if Sunnyvale could change the billing policy so we can do, uh, per-unit metering and change the law to reduce water consumption and also help people to save money. So thanks for your support and I'm happy to discuss as a follow-up, uh, via email. I'm actually, I'm ahann21@gmail.com. That's H-A-H-N-E-two-one at gmail dot com. Thanks for your support on this.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn. I will mention that, uh, I know, uh, a number of years ago that, uh, Valley Water did have a project where we, uh, did exactly that, uh, for mobile homes, uh, for the, the exact reason that you mentioned, which is, it's an incentive to, uh, get folks at, at the time, of course, long before climate change and, um, and, um, um, uh, continuing droughts, um, um, it was a way of saving water and, uh, people really did because then they understood and they saw their billing and so on. And so they, they took a much more, uh, personal responsibility and accountability for their water use. So it's a great idea. Um, any, any other folks?
I have no other hands raised at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, now I'd like to, uh, turn things over to Chief Executive Officer Rick Calendar for the next agenda item.
Right. Uh, good evening, Chair Estramera, Mayor and members of the board. Good evening, Mayor Klein and members of the Sunnyvale City Council. I, I know most of you have heard that the U.S. Drought Monitor has Santa Clara County as being in an extreme drought and obviously, we have no idea how long this is going to last or how much worse that this is going to get. Um, many of you have probably heard that, yes, it's the driest year since nineteen seventy-seven and it's on track to be the third driest year in our one-hundred years of record keeping. And so looking at this local emergency situation, it was on June ninth that the Valley Water Board of Directors declared a water shortage emergency condition in Santa Clara County uh, due to the extreme drought. And that emergency situation, we also called for a reduced water usage by fifteen percent compared to twenty nineteen. When you're looking at this in terms of how this looks throughout the state, Shasta Lake and Oroville Dam, two of the largest state's reservoirs, are at twenty-two, uh, twenty-three and twenty-two percent of capacity right now. Anderson Dam, you might have heard of, is our largest reservoir, is emptied due to FERC, that's the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, ordering that we empty the dam while we're trying to fix it due to seismic issues. The one thing I can say is that, yes, we are all in this together and you'll hear both this and in later items, we're trying to do our part as Valley Water to ensure that the water supply is available during the drought for homes and businesses, but we also need everyone else in the county to do their part with helping to achieve the, our conservation goals. And we're happy to partner with Sunnyvale to help the residents and businesses to save water and to be part of that solution. And so with that, I'm going to turn this over to our Water Utility Chief, Aaron Baker, who's going to be co-presenting on this drought emergency item. Uh, Chief Baker?
Thank you, CEO Calendar. And you're absolutely right, the time to conserve is now. Uh, I'd like to start by saying that we, uh, I greatly appreciate, uh, working with the, the city of Sunnyvale staff, uh, and partnering with them on, on the many things that we have going on. Uh, with that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Nida Bajor and she will be giving, uh, the next part of the presentation.
Good evening. I'm Nida Bajor, Senior Water Resources Specialist, and I'll be providing the update regarding the water shortage emergency condition and the call for conservation. Next slide, please. So as CEO Calendar mentioned, we are in a serious drought right now and the U.S. Drought Monitor is reporting that our county is currently in extreme drought. As you can see, in the northeastern portion is an exceptional drought. For timeline of events, in April, our governor declared a drought emergency in our state and in May, this was expanded to forty-one of our fifty-eight counties. On June ninth, Valley Water declared a water shortage emergency condition and requested Santa Clara County to proclaim drought, which was done on June twenty-second. On July eighth, the governor expanded the drought proclamation to Santa Clara County. Next slide, please. So imported water is critical to our water supply. Our water supply also depends on local water supplies, recycled water, and conservation. But imported water is the largest component of our supply, accounting for about half. Next slide, please. So this year's lack of spring snow and warm weather left our state's snowpack virtually gone by May and this was about two months earlier than average. And much of our imported water that we use comes from the state's snowpack, particularly the Northern Sierra, and it has now dwindled to zero percent of average. This means the amount of imported water we may receive this year and next is highly uncertain. Next slide, please. Our state's reservoirs reflect the drought's impact on the snowpack. Reservoirs are at low levels compared to historical conditions. Next slide, please. Our, as a result of the low state reservoir levels, our imported water allocations have been cut drastically. The state water project allocation is only at five percent this year. Typically, this can be around sixty to seventy percent. The Central Valley Project's agri, allocation for agriculture is zero and it's twenty-five percent for M and I and this stands for the municipal and industrial allocation. Valley Water was able to secure nearly twenty-nine thousand acre-feet of public health and safety water. This is from the Bureau of Recreation. And this increases the quantity of our M and I water to be equivalent to an M and I allocation of about fifty-five percent. The San Luis reservoir has been drowned down to a low level and is expected to remain low through November. It's currently below near fifty thousand acre-feet and this has been impacting water quality. The Valley Water has been managing these issues by making process adjustments at the treatment plant. Next slide, please. So as has been mentioned, we have low imported water allocations and uncertainty of future allocations. And in addition, we cannot store water locally in our largest reservoir, Anderson. And this is due to the order by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to drain it for public health and safety reasons. Normally, Anderson has the ability to store more than all of Valley Water's other nine surface water reservoirs combined. Next slide, please. So our groundwater levels may drop significantly due to limited recharge, increased pumping, and reduced imported water allocations, as well as the loss of Anderson Dam. Emergency imported supplies and additional water use reduction by the community have begun to help slow the groundwater level declines. However, projected twenty-twenty-two groundwater storage is similar to what was observed during the drought in twenty-fourteen, which continues the risk in twenty-twenty-two of resumed subsidence in North County and wells going dry, particularly in South County. One report of a dry well has been received. The well is in an unincorporated area within the southwestern Coyote Valley and is close to the foothills where well yield is generally less reliable. And groundwater is a, is a component of the county water use of about forty percent. So it's quite a key component. In South County, groundwater is the only source of drinking water. Next slide, please. So Valley Water has taken several steps to address drought. The Board of Directors declared a water shortage emergency condition on June ninth and called for adoption of water use restrictions as well as a reduction of water use by fifteen percent compared to twenty-nineteen levels. The resolution commits Valley Water to aggressively promoting our water conservation program to all water users. It also calls for restricting irrigation on lawns and ornamental landscapes to a maximum of three days. Next slide, please. Valley Water has doubled the landscape rebate for our landscape rebate program from one dollar to two dollars per square foot. We've also, um, expanded our outreach campaign. It's in multiple languages. It promotes Valley Water's conservation tools as well as programs. The campaign includes ads on TV, radio, online, social media, as well as print, and an online engagement website called Be Heard. Retailer contracts for treated water deliveries were reduced and in May, the managed recharge program was scaled back, especially in North County, due to the low imported water allocations. However, recharge of imported water in the Morgan Hill facilities did continue at the pre-drought levels. In August, additional imported water supplies did enable increased recharge in Coyote Creek and in a number of ponds in the Guadalupe and Los Gatos recharge systems. Currently, imported water is not being released in the county streams, except in Coyote Creek. The Valley Water Board of Directors is receiving monthly updates regarding the drought emergency and retailers are receiving monthly updates in ad hoc meetings. Next slide, please. Valley Water is offering a number of conservation programs to all water user types. This includes residential, commercial, and agricultural. These programs can save water indoors and outdoors. Valley Water also has a program for which water waste can be reported and the reports are addressed through educational assistance. Workshops and resources are available, including a new guidebook on sustainable landscaping. And we've seen a tremendous growth in our conservation programs this year. Next slide, please. So the county of Santa Clara and eleven cities in our county have taken action to their councils in response to the extreme drought conditions and to Valley Water's call to reduce water use by fifteen percent. Some retailers, like San Jose Municipal Water System, have implemented several administrative measures, such as watering restrictions and messaging. And investor-owned retailers have also taken action, such as through implementing restrictions and water shortages contingency plans. On July twenty-seventh, the Sunnyvale City Council adopted a resolution declaring a stage-two water supply shortage and setting a goal of a fifteen percent water use reduction. Thank you for taking this action. Next slide, please. Valley Water thanks the county, cities, retailers, and communities for all the efforts to reduce water use and these efforts truly are working. The graph here shows total water use for all retailers by month for twenty-nineteen in blue and twenty-twenty-one in orange. The graph helps track progress towards achieving the fifteen percent call for water use reduction. County-wide, the percent change of water use compared to twenty-nineteen has been steadily decreasing since March twenty-twenty-one and this shows that retailers, cities, and our communities are responding to the call for conservation. In March twenty-twenty-one, water use in Santa Clara County was twenty-five percent higher when compared to March twenty-nineteen. In July twenty-twenty-one, the county used six percent less water compared to Ju- July twenty-nineteen. Our latest data has just come in for August and it shows that the county is using nine percent less water compared to August twenty-nineteen. So we're continuing to see progress. And Valley Water anticipated that reducing water use county-wide by fifteen percent would be a gradual process. We're very encouraged to see the numbers trending in the right direction. Next slide, please. For Sunnyvale, the percent change of water use compared to twenty-nineteen has been steadily decreasing since April twenty-twenty-one. The latest data from August shows that Sunnyvale's water use was seven percent lower than August of twenty-nineteen. And when considering Valley Water's water use only, Sunnyvale's water use in August was fourteen percent lower than August twenty-nineteen. And these numbers show Sunnyvale's commitment to water use reduction. Next slide, please. The Model Water Efficient New Development Ordinance, which we also call WENDO, was developed to ensure that new developments will meet strong water efficiency standards. Valley Water will be working to encourage adoption of WENDO in our service area and the topic is going to be addressed at a drought summit that's being organized by Valley Water on October twenty-third. And during the summit, elected officials and community leaders will discuss ways to address the drought together and to help lead our communities through this emergency. Thank you, and at this time, we can take any questions.
Thank you. Uh, before we do, uh, we'll go to, uh, um, public comment and then, uh, we'll take, uh, questions and, uh, discussion from board members and council, council members. We have any, uh, public comments?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no hands raised at this time from the public.
Okay, great. Um, uh, any, uh, members of the city council or the board have, uh, any comments or questions?
Mayor Klein has his hand raised.
Yes, uh, Mayor Klein?
Sure. I'll, I'll start it off and I'm sure my-
Sure, I'll start it off, and I'm sure my colleagues have multiple questions. First, Anderson Reservoir. What is the timeline for that construction? Because that's been an ongoing effort, I know. There were questions. I think the governor vetoed a bill last year relating to expediting that process. So where is the timeline, since that's the biggest water resource that you're really looking at?
Good question.
Chair Esther Mera, this is Melanie Richardson, Assistant CEO. I would be happy to answer that question.
Yes, good evening.
So Mayor Klein, the Anderson Dam project is actually broken up into two projects. The first one is the emergency project, which we refer to as the first order compliance project. We actually have begun construction on that. We just issued a notice to proceed to begin the tunnel work. And that project consists of, in addition to draining the reservoir, building a expedited low-level tunnel, a large tunnel that lets us keep the water level low as storms come in, unlike the old tunnel we had that was very small and didn't allow us to drain the reservoir. That is expected to be completed in early 2024. And then the second portion of the project, the full retrofit, will begin soon after that and is expected to go through at about 2030. So altogether, it is roughly a 10-year project.
Okay.
And we're doing everything we can to keep on that schedule and to expedite it. But as you might imagine, we have about eight regulatory agencies overseeing us that we have to coordinate with. And that makes it somewhat complicated.
Okay, that's useful. And if there's any advocacy that our city can do or from a kind of a community collaboration, definitely pass that on to us. And my next question has to do with the wells themselves and underground water. And from that standpoint, you know, this is something that I've brought up for multiple years now. And now we're hearing about wells that are basically running dry in certain areas of the county. How many sources are we not metering, you know, from those that are actually taking groundwater on their own? Because it is a critical resource for 40% of the valley. And how are we doing? And I think, you know, one of our next items, we'll talk about that. But how are we doing as far as that underground water?
Through the chair, I'd like to answer that question.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Actually, so Valley Water meters over 90% of the water that's extracted from the ground volumetrically. And I'm actually going to ask Vanessa De La Piedra, our groundwater unit manager, to talk about the policies that we have in place on groundwater metering.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Klein and council members and board of directors. I'm Vanessa De La Piedra. I'm Valley Water's groundwater manager. And like Karen said, we have extensive metering policies. We're metering over 90% of the groundwater that's extracted. And especially in the northern portion of the county, that basin is very highly metered. Most of the pumping there is through water retailers. So all of those wells are metered. So very high fraction of those. In the southern portion of the county, where we have more of a mix of domestic wells, we have several thousand domestic wells, as well as agricultural users. Many of those are very, very small users with a small amount of pumping, so they are not actually metered. But they're still required to report their production to us on a regular basis. It typically is based on people of average uses, based on things like how many people are in the household, if it's agricultural irrigated acreage and crop types and information like that. But we do have a very good handle on the water that's pumped from the basin. And of course, we do very extensive monitoring to be aware of groundwater level changes and conditions.
Okay. And I'll go back to what I've said previously is encouraging those non-metered wells to actually be metered. Because I think, as the resident that spoke earlier, you know, it's making sure that they are paying for not an estimated amount, but an actual amount. And lastly, of course, is, you know, the drought and the goal of 15% from a statewide. And I know that we're doing slightly better. You know, we're still not at our 15% from a county, from a city standpoint. What's the next steps that Valley Water sees in trying to help our residents around the county meet that goal of 15%? Or what new measures are being contemplated, if I may ask?
Excellent question. I think what we've learned, at least from, we are heading in the right direction, and we greatly appreciate that. And Sunnyvale's 14% reduction on our Valley Water sources, we thank you very much. We also, you know, again, thank you on July when you declared your stage-two water shortage emergency. So right now, we know from the last drought, it took us over nine months to kind of, you know, to see the impacts of our initial calls. That being said, as we keep our eyes open into what 2022 may have in front of us, you know, this drought is coming on faster than, you know, than the last drought. You know, the reservoirs are lower than they have been in quite a while. And so with that, we're working internally to understand what we would like to do to ramp up some of that conservation. Again, looking at possibly concentrating more on the outside water use, which typically, for those that have converted their lawns or do certain things, we greatly appreciate all that. We're not asking for public health and safety. But we are trying to concentrate or look at where the water use really is. And that's the outside watering that we see, you know, going on. And so understanding and focusing on how we can reduce some of that outside landscape irrigation without cutting into what we'll call people's public health and safety are some of the things that we're beginning to look at. The other thing would be is that we also, you know, like to partner with our retailers. You know, we've made this call for 15%. And we know that you know your constituents as well, or as you like to say, you get the calls before we do, you know, better than we do. And so we're, you know, meeting regularly with your staff and with all the retailer staff to understand what we think might be the best next step, given your particular needs. We have, you know, we are stepping up our conservation programs. We are looking at those types of things. I think the big thing that's on the horizon, which we are, at the end of this year, we'll be looking at projections for the end of 2022, calling for, possibly calling for an additional or a higher amount, which would also, then, we would also recommend shorter water use restrictions, such as possibly watering only one day a week or looking at some of those other things that we can do to make sure that we're looking at what it takes to get things moving forward. The other thing that we've also got our eyes on is understanding that if this drought continues on, not only do we look at the end of next year, we're looking at the end of the year after that and understanding that we need to make the, have the right plans in place so that we can understand, you know, how we ramp these things up and the time it takes to take that. So I know I kind of danced around a couple of the questions there, but we are really looking at additional water use reduction measures. We are looking to actually also learn from you and the retailers as to what would work for your constituents. You know, we make the call for the recommendation, but we also want to understand, you know, how can we help, how can we work together to get the residents to conserve?
Okay, I appreciate that answer. And I do agree, we're all kind of learning along the way here and, you know, as we enter another drought. So thank you for that, and that's all I have for now. Thanks.
I'll just quickly add that, you know, we have increased our investments in our conservation programs. And also, of course, we'll have our forthcoming pretty ambitious public campaign to remind folks about how important it is to conserve.
Right.
Yeah, we have Councilmember Larson?
Yes, Councilmember Larson, good evening, sir.
Yes, thank you, Chair, appreciate it. This is really a comment more than a question, although I welcome your thoughts as well. Really appreciated the data on water use compared to 2019. Glad to see that that's trending in the right direction. And I know that every drop counts at this time. And whether we're able to save 15% or even save more than 15%, every drop we save now is a drop that will be available next year, should the drought continue. And I know that many agencies are using 2019 as the baseline for their call for reduction. And of course, COVID has been a compounding factor with work from home. Just going 2019 to 2020, a lot of areas saw their residential water use go up and their non-residential go down because people were working from home. And so if we're comparing 2020 use to pre-COVID, depending upon the mix of non-residential versus residential in a particular community, some of that apparent savings might simply be, they have a lot of offices, for example, that are now empty. That's not actually conserving water regionally. It's just shifting it around between communities. So it could be helpful to see that the usage numbers broken out residential versus non-residential, and also 2019 versus 2020 versus 2021. Because really, I think now that some things are starting, some people are starting to go back, schools are reopening, but not everything is. The baseline usage is probably somewhere between 2019 and 2020. And that might help us understand where the message, the conservation message is really getting through and where we might need to focus more messaging. Are the residents, you know, really getting it? Or the businesses, do they need to do more, vice versa? So just a comment that it may be helpful to get some finer granularity on the data to understand where we're going. And I appreciated the comments earlier about also looking into outside water use to, it sounds like you're already taking steps to understand where the conservation opportunities are. But I think as city council members, it would help us if those water savings numbers could be broken down just a little bit more to see what kind of savings we're truly seeing. Thank you.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you, Councilman. Aaron?
I have, sorry.
Oh.
Go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we definitely recognize that it's, you know, as I was mentioning before, actually, nobody knows your residents better than you. And also, the one-size-fits-all approach to the county is kind of, is a difficult one. And we understand that, you know, messaging and making sure we can get, you know, how we get, how we reach the residents, how we reach actually the businesses, and how we work on some of those. And understanding also, you know, for us, the initial call was that we were new, we were short on water. But then 2019, 2020, in some areas, like you said, you know, some for COVID, the water use went down. Some for COVID, the water use went up, depending on which area you're in. I'd like to, Ms. Struve, I was wondering if you had any follow-up thoughts on this?
Sure, thank you, Aaron. Here's Ms. Struve, Assistant Officer for Water Supply. So just because we talked about outdoor water use a lot, we chose 2019 because it was still pre-drought year. It wasn't dry yet. And because we see our use outdoors increase a lot during droughts, that's why we did a 2019 call. And I believe that our data didn't really show, countywide anyway, a big difference in water use, you know, between the COVID. But it may for individual cities, of course. But yeah, the reason we chose 2019 was because it was pre-drought, or maybe at least in between droughts.
Great. Another?
Vice Mayor Hendricks?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, oh, thank you. So I'd like to follow on a little bit to Mayor Klein's comment. And I'd like to ask a little bit about subsidence. And, you know, subsidence has to do with how much water is being taken out of the ground and availability of water. But it also has a big impact to infrastructure that's in the ground. And so I'm kind of curious if there are any kind of forecasts or estimates. If we stay on the current state of usage and if we're not seeing a change in the amount of water coming to us, so if we're in just steady state, at what point does subsidence start to become an issue, and in particular in North County?
You do keep track of that, Vanessa?
Yes, hello again. So yes, subsidence historically has been a very major issue in the northern portion of the county, including Sunnyvale, which historically had seven to eight feet of permanent subsidence or sinking in the land surface that we'll never get back. It's irreversible. The good news is, because of all the huge investments that we've made over time in reservoirs and imported water, permanent subsidence was effectively halted around 1970. But because of the huge impact, like you mentioned, damage to underground infrastructure, it can cause seawater intrusion, flooding risks. The costs to the communities are enormous. So we're very vigilant and continuing to monitor that. We have extensive benchmark surveys that we do every year. We actually have, one of our key monitoring points is in Sunnyvale at the 101-237 interchange. We have wells that we monitor in terms of water levels. And we're very conservative in our approach because we want to make sure that we absolutely minimize the risk of permanent subsidence. So to get to your question about if we continue on the current trend, what will that mean? If we still are seeing these kind of declines into next year, that's part of the reason why we called for the shortage condition, because we're very concerned that, you know, as soon as next year, we could be approaching some of those subsidence thresholds that we've established to minimize the risk. Part of the challenge of subsidence is that you can't necessarily tell if it's elastic, you know, if it's recoverable or permanent until you get to the other side of it. We do have changes in the land surface that happen every year and even seasonally. So we do see some uplift and some compaction. Certainly, we're seeing some compaction in the benchmark data that we're seeing. But we saw that during the last drought, too. And so the issue is, if you can recover your water levels soon enough, that damage won't be permanent. So that's, but again, we don't necessarily know while we're in it. So we're taking proactive action now to try to prevent that from happening and again, minimize any risk of that.
Yeah, and my concern right now is not permanent damage. It's that it's temporary. And I'm even less worried about seawater coming in. I'm more worried about what it means to, you know, freshwater pipes in the ground, dirty water pipes in the ground, and all the other infrastructure that's in the ground that can be damaged with temporary problems. And I think I heard you say in your comments, next, if things stay steady state, next year is the issue year. We're not looking at a two- or three-year horizon. This is, it's potentially a problem next year. Did I understand you correctly?
That's correct. And that's why, I mean, we're really pushing for water use reduction because that's how we can improve the situation by reducing the stress on the basin and keeping our groundwater levels in a healthy state.
Yeah, I'll just make one other comment that, from my perspective, because I thought I heard one of the previous speakers say, you know, it takes nine months for, when we ask the public to make a change to try and, where we actually see the full result of that. I'm all for you guys making, you know, requests of changes much sooner. I don't, you know, I think we're looking at a serious problem for next year, potentially. And again, the infrastructure, because if something happens to any of our infrastructure in the ground, it's very, very expensive to repair for what goes on. And so I think, you know, we, I would encourage us trying to be ahead of the curve of asking for whatever changes we need to do to make sure we provide enough water, but make sure there is no, no, no temporary even subsidence that happens in North County. So those are just my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilman.
I have no other hands raised.
Uh, Dr. Santos?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair Hendricks. I totally concur with you. Chief Baker did a great presentation and many other inputs of Mayor Klein and so on. But the other issue is this, just like with COVID-19, it comes to the point where you have to be more restrictive and start doing enforcement and whatever have you. And I totally agree with you. This is where it's coming to. Not that we're enforcement powerful here, but the issue is we have to educate, so on. And then when that doesn't work, we've got to continue with metering all the water use. And then we have our legal staff looking at potential enforcement. We've got to do more. And it's not going to be easy. But like you said, if we continue waiting nine months, you're going to have subsidence and some very, very hard issues that we have to face even more so. And the last thing is, when you all get opportunity on October 23rd at 9 o'clock, we're having a kind of a workshop with everybody to see if we can be more consistent and try to encourage everybody to use water wisely and use it properly, not waste it and so on. That's going to be a workshop here out of there at the, Tony, I think you're the chair now, October 23rd at 9 o'clock. So we invite everybody to join us, and your ideas will definitely be considered there, and we need them more. there. And we need to more. But the strong point is this, working together. Then when people are not, what are we going to do? Well, we got to do more than just say, well, that's a slap on the wrist. We got to do more things. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no more questions. Then we'll move on to our next item. Take it back to our CEO.
Right. Good evening again. Moving to the next item for item 2.2. Infrastructure projects like our advanced purified water project are critical for our water supply in the face of droughts and climate change. And the current drought is making it obvious that our ported water supplies are less certain, which makes our proposed projects like our advanced purified water projects even more important. And we're happy to work with cities like Sunnyvale towards win-win solutions for the entire county. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kirsten Struve to take it away and talk about update on our Valley Water Purified Water Program.
Kirsten, good afternoon. Good evening.
Thank you so much, CEO Callender and Chair Estramera. I'll be giving an update on the purified water project and as well as the countywide water reuse master plan. And we discussed both of those issues in in detail also at the joint committee meeting. So as we had just talked about, this is also a graph that shows what happened to groundwater levels in Santa Clara County with and land surface elevation with population growth and increased pumping. And that is why we're, you know, moving forward with the purified water project. Because it is one way we can help the groundwater stay healthy. And you've seen a slide before from NIDA, but now we're going to focus on the fact that recycled water at this moment is 5% of the water supplies, 5% of the water, and it is purple pipe water. So that is non-coated water. And we would like to increase that. Our board has set a policy to increase it to 10% of recycled and purified. And the difference between recycled and purified is recycled water is basically treated wastewater and and is used for landscape irrigation and industrial purposes. Purified water has additional treatment and is then suitable for drinking purposes. And this is the type of technology and the type of project we're talking about. We would add microfiltration, reverse osmosis, and UV light disinfection and advanced oxidation to the treatment of recycled water and then convey it to our groundwater recharge ponds. Specifically, we're looking at a project in either San Jose or Palo Alto with 18 to 20 miles of conveyance, including a pipe through Sunnyvale, if the Palo Alto site is chosen, and then conveyance to the Los Gatos recharge system, which is our largest recharge system. And here's a close-up of that system. And basically, what this project would do is release water into these ponds, which currently receive both local and imported water, and so integrate the supply together. And then it goes into the groundwater and can be pumped up from there. And this is called indirect potable reuse. Our timeline is for our board to make a decision on the project site, either Palo Alto or San Jose, and then award the project next year to a private partner. We're using a public-private partnership. So a private entity will design, build, finance, operate, and maintain the purified water project. But Valley Water will retain ownership. And then we hope to have construction complete and water flowing by 2028. We're also doing an environmental impact report and had a scoping meeting back in March. And any impacts and mitigations, including for construction, will be identified in that EIR. This is the first phase of the countywide reuse master plan that we worked on together with all our wastewater partners in the county, which is the, you know, guiding, will be our guiding document to implement additional recycled water and purified water projects. And we very much thank Sunnyvale staff for participating in that project. They were one of the important partners in developing the countywide reuse master plan that was just adopted by our board. And that master plan also looks at how this initial phase of our purified water project can be expanded in the future, including with water from Sunnyvale, and how we could also integrate once regulations are available, direct potable reuse, meaning putting that water into pipes or into treatment plants. That's my update, and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, Kirsten. And I should, and I should mention that we have, of course, a a joint committee of Valley, of Valley Water Directors and and Sunnyvale City Council members. We hadn't met for a while, but we did meet this past month. We expect to continue to meet on a more regular basis, especially since we are being ambitious about expanding our purification center and also determining where to cite the next phase of water purification. We have committed and will continue to maintain communication very steady with with Sunnyvale City Council. We are committed to making sure that we keep you up on every phase of the project, where we are, where what we're planning and so on, to make sure that you as our partners are always up to the information where we are and are always included in the decision-making regarding recycle and water purification and all of our efforts. Comments? Or any public comment? And then we'll go to our members.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no public comment at this time.
Okay, great.
I do have Councilmember Melton. It has his hand.
Yes. Councilmember Melton?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Russ Melton here from Sunnyvale City Council. And I'll first and foremost say it's a real privilege, I feel, to be part of the Joint Recycled Water Subcommittee. And Chair, as you noted, a couple of weeks ago, we had a subcommittee meeting consisting of Councilmember Larson and myself from the Sunnyvale side, and of course, the very knowledgeable Valley Water Board members. And I'll be happy to defer to my esteemed colleague, Councilmember Larson, because he's the vice chair of the of the committee.
Yes.
So Gustav, of course, will chime in if he has any thoughts about the subcommittee meeting. But I just wanted to say, first and foremost, it is absolutely clear to me that Valley Water desires to have an exceptional relationship with the city of Sunnyvale. As Valley Water goes through its decisioning process about advanced water treatment facilities, where the volume exists, whether that be, whether that's San Jose or Palo Alto. Palo Alto, of course, has other municipalities that feed into its sewer treatment plant. I know for a fact that Valley Water will get to a decision on that. And then I learned during the subcommittee meeting how important it is for Sunnyvale and Valley Water to have a good relationship, because there could be a point in the future where Sunnyvale's Water Pollution Control Plant also becomes a contributor to the grand scheme of recycled water. And, you know, that our wat, our wastewater treated to an appropriate level could find its way to the recharge ponds. And whether that happens in a year or five years or 15 years, well, that that answer will become clear in due course. But I think that would be an incredible accomplishment for Sunnyvale, for the region. And I applaud Valley Water's leadership and and all of that. So I just felt like I wanted to to say that. The the other thing that I'm reminded of, because the presentation that we just saw had a really helpful visualization graphic of subsidence over time. And so I'm just going to echo on to what my colleague, Vice Chair Glenn Hendricks, was saying about whether it's temporary or permanent subsidence. It's one of those things that gives me a real sense of anxiousness and urgency to any extent that Valley Water wants to turn the knob more to the right in terms of well water usage and all the complexities that are involved in that, and turn the knob to the right in terms of education, or when appropriate, to enforcement, or how to accelerate recharging the groundwater supplies. It's a, I'm just here to say, I concur. It's a really important topic. And while the risk may not be out there in the in the community, that maybe could be part of or understood by the community, they're out there. And that could be part of the the education efforts that Valley Water considers undertaking, which is, you know, there, there's not only a water risk, but educating the public on the subsidence risk and why this is is such a big deal. I also have some other minor thoughts that I've I've shared with my city manager in terms of, you know, the Water Pollution Control Plant in Sunnyvale and its potential role in all of this. But for now, I'll turn off my microphone. And perhaps my esteemed colleague, Councilmember Larson, Vice Chair of the Subcommittee, might have a chance to speak next. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Councilmember Larson has his hand.
Yes, Councilmember Larson?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Yes, sir.
And thank you, Councilmember Melton, for kicking things off here. I was very appreciative of the joint meeting that we had with Valley Water several weeks ago on this topic. We had a very good discussion about Valley Water's goals and opportunities and the challenges that I think that it takes to actually bring projects like this to fruition. And I think we're all coming to realize that wastewater effluent is an increasingly valuable resource and is going to play a bigger and bigger role in water reliability in this area. The treating wastewater really is a drought-proof supply, if you will. But there are also significant challenges, technical challenges, regulatory challenges, financial challenges. And I applaud Valley Water for for the detailed efforts that you've made to date on coming up with a comprehensive plan for how to move forward on recycled water within the county. And I know that Sunnyvale would very much would look forward to a chance to to work with you to have our effluent be part of that program. And I also understand that these projects take time and are complex. And so I don't envy you, your task of balancing all the the different considerations. But, you know, my perspective is, it's not a question of if the effluent will be used for purified water. It's just a question of when and how we get there. And I'm appreciative of the ongoing partnership that we do have with Valley Water, and I want to maintain that that good relationship so that when the time is right, we can explore further opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Larson.
Councilmember Fong?
Yes, that, yeah. Just want to say thank you to staff for the great presentation. And I would agree with my colleague, that, you know, Sunnyvale, I'm sure would love to be a partner on this project. And it's just a question of when versus if it will happen. So question I had is on Slide 8. You mentioned that fall 2021, the board would decide on a project site, so essentially choosing a partner. Is that correct?
Yes, it would be choosing between Palo Alto and San Jose, depending on the status of negotiations. It may, you know, be later in the year, more like winter, because we just started having discussions with San Jose again.
That's what I thought, because I think the early last month, the San Jose City Council at the Rules Committee passed a memorandum to reopen negotiations with the city of San Jose, targeting a completion of the negotiations with the mediator by January 2022. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Great, great. So I, yeah, I just wanted to clarify, it won't be fall. It will most likely be early winter. And so just the question for me is, will we want to have another discussion like the one we're having today, but more in depth on the actual potential project? And I'm assuming the Subcommittee that my colleagues sit on are discussing the components of what a project agreement would look like. But could you just walk me through now through the end of January, if the Valley Water was interested in a project with the city of Sunnyvale, how that would come to fruition and how that might be another public hearing that would be hosted?
We we expect, Councilman Fong, we we expect to have another meeting of of our Joint Committee before the end of the calendar year. So I think we were talking about at least the winter, whether it's November or so. So that's what I meant. We made a commitment to make sure that that the committee was active and was completely engaged and and that we shared everything that was going on with the committee, so that if there's any opportunities to do anything different, the city of Sunnyvale will be engaged with us. So certainly, before the winter, we'll have a, the actual committee will meet. And, you know, we will share where we are at that point. And then, of course, we'll continue to meet, which means we'll probably meet again either in January or February. The our Joint Committee will then meet again. So we expect to keep you up on a very regular basis on what's going on and get feedback from you. This is a true partnership. So that's why I mentioned that we will be actively meeting again, because we're at a point where we're going to be making some pretty long-term decisions. And we want to want to make sure that all our partners are involved.
Fantastic. Thank you. That that concludes my questions. I greatly appreciate the insight that the Chair and staff has provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Next?
I have a Councilmember Melton.
Yes. Councilman Melton?
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Chair Estramera. Just to, just to put a ribbon and a bow on on my comments, I'm looking forward personally to the ongoing conversation with Valley Water. I think the the last meeting was tremendously helpful. And as Valley Water Chair goes through its process of making what what I think will be a very difficult decision to make. And clearly, there's a lot of heavy discussions going on. The the funny thing is that we had the Subcommittee meeting that was relatively close time-wise to this meeting that we're having right now. And and that's just an interesting function of the of the calendar. And I would commit, and I'm sure that my colleague, Councilmember Larson, would also agree, we have plenty of opportunities, once we have a Subcommittee meeting like we did a couple of weeks ago,
Yeah.
to share with our colleagues at the end of our routine council meeting. So if there's any desire whatsoever by Councilmember Fong or any of the other esteemed council members to get, you know, virtual, real-time updates on what we've discussed at the Subcommittee meeting, well, of course, we have a process for that. And so I felt like I just wanted to to share that notion, Chair. And I also wanted to circle back, because I think it's a really important concept that Councilmember Larson brought up. It's, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And this is not the first drought in my lifetime. I was born and raised in Palo Alto, so I remember the the droughts in 1970s. And so this is part of life in California and in Silicon Valley. And I I agree with the sense that I get from Valley Water that it's time to take further control of our supply of water. And the sewer effluent and purification is a huge part of that. Thank you for the second opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Councilman. And as I mentioned previously, at two, at the Joint Committee meeting, we have, as you, some of you know, we have issued an RFQ for a for our private partner. And we've gotten, I believe it's eight responses. So there's an awful lot of activity and interest in joining us as private partners. So we're moving along all the way around. We will be meeting again soon with Palo Alto. Our staffs are meeting on a regular basis. But our Joint Committee meeting is coming up. So all of the activity is is moving very quickly. As I mentioned previously, you know, we're already looking at the advent of a pretty extensive infrastructure program from the federal government. I know things are going on, but we all know how this works. You know, everybody's got to be involved. This is a long negotiation. But I'm sure in the end, that we're going to have a pretty extensive infrastructure program, well-funded, that will include a lot of the issues that we're talking about today. There will be, I think, a lot of water projects will be supported and included, as well as recycling projects that will be right at the forefront of the infrastructure projects. And the state will also be considering that. So I think we're moving in the right direction. And we've got the timetable. I think, you know, we have to stick to the timetable so that we can be effective, be ready and prepared for when we get those funding opportunities. We want to take advantage of them. So we're all moving, and all of our partners are right there with us. And I think, you know, for our joint constituents, we are, we are doing the very best that we can. But we are absolutely delivering. And we'll keep this pace going. And and like I mentioned, we'll keep you up on it. So thank you for the discussion. There's no motion required for this informational report. So now I'll turn the floor over to Mayor Klein for the next item.
Thank you, Chair. I now want to introduce Sunnyvale City Manager Kent Stephens, who will be introducing city staff for our next item on the Sunnyvale Clean Water Program. Kent?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members and Valley Water Board members. The Sunnyvale Clean Water Programs are The Sunnyvale Clean Water Programs are a long-term program to replace our wastewater treatment plant. And so we started planning for this more than 10 years ago with conditions assessments that then led into master planning, environmental review, and design. We're now nearly done with construction of our first large project to replace the primary treatment system. And we're going to continue with this program for probably the next 20 or 30 years. But for more details, I'm pleased to introduce Ramona Chinacotla, our Sunnyvale Director of Environmental Services, and also Chip Taylor, our Director of Public Works, who'll give you a presentation with an update on the Clean Water Program. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Sunnyvale council members and Valley Water Board members. I'm Ramona Chinacotla, I'm the Director of Environmental Services for the City of Sunnyvale. I'm joined by Chip Taylor, who's the Director of Public Works, and we will be jointly making this presentation. David, my first slide. All right. So the Sunnyvale Clean Water Program, as our city manager mentioned, is a series of projects that together essentially rebuild our water pollution control plant or wastewater treatment plant. Next slide. This is an aerial view of our water pollution control plant. You see the actual main plant at the bottom of your screen. You have two big ponds, they are about 440 acres in size. They are actually part of the treatment process, and they provide biological treatment for the plant. One of the the key aspects of this plant is that it's a very old plant. It was built in 1956, and it's undergone multiple upgrades. It provides tertiary treatment level treatment for the wastewater that comes in here. It was designed and permitted for about 30 million gallons a day. And on an average day, we get about 12 to 30 million gallons a day during dry weather. And it serves a population of about 155,000, in addition to the daytime population that comes into Sunnyvale every day. It discharges into the San Francisco Bay. The plant itself is located in the northern part of Sunnyvale, you know, at the corner of Coridian Drive and Borregas. And so the discharge from the plant is pretty much directly into Guadalupe Slough and then into the South Bay. In addition to the wastewater treatment, the plant is also equipped to produce recycled water. It produces about 250 million gallons of recycled water every year. Next slide. So this is a close-up view of the actual plant itself. On the left side, you see the actual existing facilities, and these are currently operational. And this is how we actually treat our wastewater that comes in today. On the right side, you actually see the construction that's going on. This is a photograph that the lady painted. You actually see the primary treatment plant and headworks and the construction. That project is almost complete, and it will be actually, we'll be bringing it online in March of next year. Next slide. So the Sunnyvale Clean Water Program started, our project really started with a condition assessment in 2006. As part of the condition assessment, there were several structures and assets that were identified as needing immediate rehabilitation. And so based on this, the city actually implemented several rehab projects. This was followed by a strategic infrastructure plan, which gave us a high-level view of some of the things that we needed to do to bring the plant to the latest 20th century standards, 21st century standards. And this was followed up by a more detailed master plan. And the master plan itself was adopted by the City Council in 2016. Next slide. So the purpose of the Clean Water Program, these are some of the drivers that we had to keep in mind or we kept in mind as we developed our master plan. The biggest one is to comply with the latest regulatory standards. We also knew that there were some new standards that were coming down through the water board in terms of our nutrient discharge standards. So we wanted to comply with all those new standards. Extend the life of some of the facilities that we were going to still keep. Keep the plant safe and dry, obviously. And a very important factor was to optimize the cost of the project. So the impact on the wait payers was minimized. And then lastly, we also wanted to improve the reliability of the power supply. Next slide. So the master plan overall identified close to 30 projects. A series of these projects, one of them is right now in construction, and then that'll be followed by other projects for close to 30 years. And as you can imagine, this is basically a very extensive project or program, close to a billion dollars. This, in fact, will be the largest project in Sunnyvale's, largest CIP project in Sunnyvale's history. We have been able to, we have been successful in getting loans, low-interest loans, SRF loans for the primary treatment project, and also an additional VFI loan, and another SRF loan for our secondary treatment, solids handling, and other projects. So I'm going to basically stop here, and Chip is going to go over some of the specific projects that we are currently working on and we will be working on in the next few years. Chip?
Great, thank you very much, and thanks for having us tonight. Go ahead and go to the next slide, and I'll get started. So this slide, it shows the treatment plant again, kind of a planned view of the treatment plant, the same view that you saw in the aerial photograph before. Most of the current plant is over to the left side of the slide. And then where we're doing a lot of the construction right now is over to the right side. The projects that we have either ongoing right now or coming up in the near future. We have the primary project in purple there, so that's the one that's currently under construction. And I'll give you a timeline of all these projects a little bit later in the presentation. But that one's nearing completion. And then I'll jump to the middle, because that's going to be our next one, is called our Site Prep Package. And that one is actually doing a lot of underground utilities of moving them around, kind of moving a lot of things out of the way so that we can do a lot of the other projects. So we split that out so we can kind of get ahead of some of the other projects that we're working on. And then we have in the kind of orangish color and the pink color over on the far left and far right, we have our secondary project that we'll be doing, so all of our secondary treatment will be done there. And then our rehab project is in pink, is basically through the condition assessments and the master plan, we determined that there were certain components within the facility itself that didn't necessarily need to be rebuilt, but just rehabilitated. And so we'll be doing a lot of work over in there. They'll be going on more or less the same timeframe. And then in the blue is the Clean Water Center. So that would be a new kind of admin and laboratory building that would be constructed, as well as a maintenance facility, a partial maintenance facility. That one is currently not funded, but we are hopeful that we'll be able to find some funding through some of the loans that we received and some other sources. So we're currently actively looking to try to fund that particular project. But we've already taken the plans to 90% on that, and we hope to continue with that. Next slide. And then I've just got some photos here just to kind of show you some of the projects and what's going on. So this is the primary project, and this is the primary headworks facility. So our giant hole in the ground that we have for everything that's coming into the plant. Next slide. This is actually kind of a rendering of the Clean Water Center. So the new administration laboratory maintenance building that would be constructed right near the entrance of the facility. We would tear down the existing, much older building, and then we would put this building in its place more or less. Next slide. Then we do have our perimeter wall for flood protection. And what's really great about this wall, as a portion of it, we're actually working with Valley Water. So we've had a great relationship. You were already looking to build a wall along some of the channels there, and our wall was going to be right next to it. So we said, well, let's work together and try to combine this into one wall. And so we've made some great progress on that. So that's a good collaboration that is taking place right now. Next slide. So this is the construction schedule, at least over the next five years or so. You can see a lot of these projects are on top of each other. We're going to have a lot of activity. The primary headworks project by itself was very busy. With these other projects in play, it's going to be a very active construction site for a while. So you can see the primary headworks project is nearing completion. We still have about nine more months or so before that will be fully complete. We do have that Site Prep Package, a lot of that underground utility work and everything that's going to be done. That just was recently awarded, and so it'll be under construction or just about start construction here. And that'll go through 23 for a big portion of 2023. Then we have the secondary project, that's one of our big, big projects, as well as that plant rehab, doing some of a rehabilitation of some components of the plant. Both of those will start about mid next year, maybe toward the fall of next year, just depending on how award of the contract works. And then they'll be going, ongoing for several years for both of those projects. Rehab is a little bit shorter in timeframe. The perimeter wall project would start in 23 and go through a portion of 24. And so again, that's a portion of that is the joint wall between with Valley and Valley Water and Sunnyvale. And then there's a pipeline rehab. Some of the, we recently had a pipe that broke out there, and we had to put some temporary measures in place. So as part of that, we recognize that there may be some pipes that need to be replaced in that portion. So that's another project that we're currently working on, and that wouldn't start until 2024. It's a little bit smaller project, but an important project. And then you see at the very bottom, starting in kind of toward the fall of 2023, is the Clean Water Center. So that would be the admin lab and maintenance building. Again, we don't currently have funding for that, but again, we are very hopeful that we'll be able to find that funding. And then that's how that would fit in. So we're trying to do a lot of things now that would allow that to slip in if we provide the full funding for that particular project. And with that, I'll hand it back over to Ramona to finish the presentation.
Thank you, Chip. So our master plan is already six years old. So next year, we are basically, we are basically doing an update of our master plan, just re-looking at some of the things that were approved in the last master plan. One of the key items that we're really excited about is Sunnyvale is one of the few cities that actually source separates our food. So we get about 8,000 tons of food waste that comes to our smart station food, smart station waste processing facility. So that is a great source of energy, and we can use that food waste to digest it in our anaerobic digesters in the wastewater plant. And we are hoping to provide another energy source for the plant. So that's something that we'll be studying as part of this master plan update. Also, you will be seeing another presentation on our Mofet Park specific plan, which is an area very close to the plant, and that is looking at some substantial growth. So that growth, we would have to also look at how it affects the wastewater treatment plant capacity. So that's something that we'll be looking at. We're also going to be looking at some of the secondary treatment alternatives. We are currently close to doing the first phase of our secondary treatment. And we also have another phase. So as we go with the second phase, we're going to be looking at intensification and other options that improve the treatment quality and quantity. Order management is another aspect that we'll be looking at. We know that the air district now has more stringent requirements as it relates to air quality. So that's something that our master plan needs to address going forward. Sea level rise and also PFAS and biosolids disposal are other things that we'll be looking at in this master plan update. Next slide. So that concludes our presentation, and Chip and I will be happy to answer any questions the board directors has or council members.
Okay, I'll first go ahead and move to the public. So I'll open the public hearing on this item. Since we remain in a virtual setting, I'll ask the public to use the virtual raised hand button or dial star on any telephone to indicate that they wish to speak. The clerk will then unmute your microphone when it's your turn to address city council and the district board. Speakers will be given three minutes to speak. Board clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised at this time.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board and council. Are there any questions or comments from the board or council?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, this is the clerk. Oh, never mind, I had somebody raise their hand. Oh, there we go. I did have a member of the public raise their hand as soon as you started to close. Would you like me to?
Go ahead and reopen and let Gita speak.
Okay. Gita Dev?
Thank you, Mayor Klein, thank you, staff. My question is, I'm really asking this question as a private citizen. That was a wonderful presentation and was extremely informative about the wastewater treatment. I have a few questions that I would like to pose. One is that I noticed that in Menlo Park, in order to move some of their facility away from sea level rise, they have installed a satellite facility up in Sharon Heights to capture some of the water around in that residential area and use it, in that case, in a golf course. And they have recycled water for about 180 million gallons per year. And I was wondering if the master plan, looking forwards to sea level rise, whether that might be something that is a strategy that Public Works may be thinking about. You know, maybe in 50 years, by that time, we need to be planning to be moving uphill with satellite facilities. That was one question. And the second was, with sea level rise, we've noticed that in some other facilities like Oreloma, I think maybe even South San Francisco may be thinking about it, is to, for tertiary treatment of water. They were looking at combining nature-based adaptation for polishing the water for reuse, using sort of eco-tone levee-type things where it's very gentle slope, but is planted with native vegetation, and the water is filtered, the final polishing is done for the water and on that slope in order to then reuse that water. And I was just wondering whether those were sort of adaptation resilience ideas that we were looking at, because obviously, we are very concerned when we see this, you know, with walls all around it and the sea level is rising around it, sort of like a bathtub ultimately. So just wondering about that. There are questions that I would love to hear from the staff at some point. Thank you so much for the opportunity and for the presentation, very good presentation.
Thank you, Gita, and we'll make sure that staff gets those comments and, you know, feeding, looking at what other cities is doing is always useful. Thank you. And so with that, we will again close the public hearing and bring it back to the board and the council. Are there any comments or questions from council or the board? I see none. I just want to thank staff for the presentation, definitely. This is the biggest project that the city has done in its history. And definitely, you know, as we move forward, how we schedule that, how we fund that has been, let's say, a feat of effort from city staff. And I appreciate their hard work in making sure that all the pieces are able to be done pretty much almost simultaneously to a large degree. But also, the critical thing has been getting, you know, the appropriate funding, which has ultimately saved us quite a bit of money in the long run. So I give kudos to staff as far as that's concerned. Councilmember Melton, you have a comment?
Yeah, and I'll just jump in behind you, Mayor, because I agree with everything you said. And I heard Ramona talk about Sunnyvale's food cycle program very briefly, and my colleagues have heard me say And my colleagues have heard me say this. I think food cycle in Sunnyvale has been an outrageous success. Uh, and this is where Sunnyvale residents self-separate, uh, their food cycleable products, uh, corn cobs and eggshells and coffee grounds. Uh, and to make a long story short, that keeps all that garbage from going into Kirby Canyon. And instead it's separated for other uses, uh, including potentially going into an anaerobic digester at the water pollution control plant, uh, to be turned into additional energy. So, um, I felt like I wanted to chime in right after you spoke, Mayor Klein, about, um, all the wonderful things about food cycle and how it's lowered cost for our residents. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So I see no other comments from the district board or from council. So we will go ahead and move on to, oh, actually no, I now pass it back to Chair Estramera for the next item.
Thank you, Mayor Klein. Uh, we'll move on over to, um, 2.4 update on Sunnyvale East West Flood Channels Protection Project. I'll hand it over to the CO.
All right. Thank you, Chair Estramera. Um, as both the board and council likely know, the voters of Seneca County have been very generous in voting multiple times over the last 20 years to fund flood protection projects in Seneca County. And one of those projects also is the Sunnyvale East and West Project, which also was partially funded through the State Clean Water Fund. And the good news is that this project is expected to be completed in FY '24. And it's important to note that once this project is completed, FEMA will reevaluate the floodplain and will likely remove residents from the floodplain, which will remove the requirements that they pay for flood insurance. And projects like this are important, especially right now, because after drought, after droughts, the number and magnitude of floods increase because the ground is too dry, can't absorb rain fast enough, so water flows over land flooding surrounding areas. So it's really important that we're able to complete these projects timely. I'd like to now introduce Deputy Operating Officer Rochelle Blank, and she's going to co-present with Engineering Unit Manager Steve Ferrante. So I'll turn this over to, uh, DOO Blank.
Uh, thank you, CEO, uh, Callender. Yes, Rochelle Blank, Deputy Operating Officer of Waterships Design and Construction Division. And I am accompanied this evening with, uh, Stephen Ferrante, Engineering Unit Manager. Um, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and we will, uh, run through a presentation. Okay. Uh, Stephen, are you on?
Yes. Evening, everyone. So, uh, next slide, please. So I'm going to give you first a little, uh, overview of the project. Um, if you're not familiar with the Sunnyvale East and West Channels, they were constructed by the district in the 1960s. And we've had flooding on the, uh, both channels in 1963, 68, 83, 86, and 98. 98 was, uh, very significant and I'll have a photo later on about the flooding there. Um, the project is funded by State Clean Water and it's fully funded. And the design is complete. Uh, the, it's about a total of nine miles long. The west channel is approximately two and a half miles and east channel is approximately six and a half miles. Next, please. Okay, so, uh, we submitted our, uh, permit applications to the resource agencies in June 2017. Seems like a long time ago, but a lot's happened between, uh, now and June 2017. One of the things that came about was, and I'll talk a little bit later on, was, um, Google came to the district, district management about a enhancement project, uh, associated with their development that could enhance a portion of the west channel. And so we pursued that and I will, uh, talk about that later in the presentation. As far as the permanent right-of-way acquisition, that's been completed and it's been completed for several years. Uh, if you want to thank the city for, for that, because the city, there were several parcels that the city owned that, uh, the project required for construction. Uh, there are some temporary construction areas that are pending and, and the only reason they're pending is because we haven't have a set, uh, start date for the construction. Uh, we already have, uh, executed a trail cost sharing agreement and J- a joint use agreement with the city of Sunnyvale. We also have a bay, bay trail cost sharing agreement completed with Google. And the construction contract is planned sometime in 2022. Next slide, please. So here's the photo of the flooding in 1998. Uh, that's Caribbean Drive. You're looking south on Prosper Avenue. So quite significant. Next slide, please. So this is just a typical section of the west channel. Like I said, that they are acting as storm drains. There is no natural watershed that was here before. They were constructed to alleviate, uh, localized flooding and, uh, to, uh, and that was caused by a lot by subsidence. So very narrow channel and this is from Carl Road looking south towards Caribbean Drive. Next slide, please. This is the east channel, a little bit wider. Um, and you can see the reason I chose this slide is one of the, one of the competing interests here in this right-of-way is you can see the bases of the PG&E transmission towers. And, uh, this channel, like I said, was constructed in the 60s and, and, um, it follows an alignment where it kind of avoids the foundations for these, uh, the PG&E transmissions and it requires this concrete lining. And what that does is doesn't do well for the natural banks because, uh, the water gets diverted from one bank to the other and to go around these tower foundations. And the concrete speeds up the velocities and you see the erosion type of, uh, situation we have along the banks. Um, the project will solve, besides the flood protection, uh, increase the level to a 100 year protection. It will address these erosion sites. Next slide, please. So the, the, the project on the downstream of 101 on the east channel from 101 to the bay, uh, we will have floodwalls. From the west channel from Matilda Avenue to the bay, we'll have floodwalls. Um, they're either on the outboard side or inboard side, um, and they kind of alternate on, on, because of different locations, uh, in the, uh, along the reaches. Um, and it, like I said, it, the, uh, floodwalls will provide, provide 100 year protection and they meet FEMA floodwork, FEMA three board standards. Um, the vertical heights of the walls range from one foot at the very upstream limit to approximately seven and a half feet above existing ground in the downstream area. And the bridgehead walls at Caribbean will have, um, a graphic arts that, uh, artwork that's already been, uh, reviewed by the city and form liners on the floodwalls. Next slide, please. This is kind of a typical section of the, uh, east channel where we have the erosion and, uh, so we'll be putting rock slope protection in at the invert and then filling in, uh, two foot of native fill at the bottom of the invert. So the RSP, which is Rock Slope Protection Design, is, is pending with the resource agencies. Specifically, the Regional Water Quality Control Board was concerned about the amount of rock we're putting in the channel. So we've had to go back and optimize the design by evaluating different flow regimes, five-year, 10-year, 25-year, 50-year, to see where the velocities, uh, would, would, uh, increase to a point where it would cause erosion and then justify the rock in, in that manner. Um, and then, like I said, there's a wee two-foot thick of native soil at the invert, uh, to promote habitat value. And then, uh, the upper slopes, um, of the channel will be tr- treated with seed mix and naturally erosion controlled blankets. Next slide, please. So the most difficult portion of this project, in my opinion, is the replacement of the existing bridges at the east channel along Caribbean Drive. And it's going to be, the two bridges are going to be replaced with a triple cell box culvert, which you see the cross-section in the bottom right corner of this slide. So we're going to replace it with the larger, uh, triple cell culvert. And then it requires a stage detour, traffic control detour plan. And the west channel, we have two places where we're building, uh, under crossing culverts. And that would be at Carl Road Bridge next to the treatment plant. We're replacing that existing, um, single cell culvert with a larger, uh, culvert. And then in, uh, Java Drive, we have, uh, the existing conditions there are, there's sidewalk, there's no sidewalk at the street, but there's two, you know, on each side, there's a pedestrian kind of sidewalk bridge that goes over the levee. Well, we're going to replace that at the direction of the city to, um, extend the culvert underneath Java and put in new sidewalks there and eliminate those bridges. And then lastly, like again, for the, uh, for the second time here, the, the project does provide 100 year flood protection. Next slide, please. So there's been various, uh, agreements associated with this project. So first, like I said earlier, there's been a, already executed in 2016, a joint use agreement for trails and, and also a cost share agreement for that. And you can see in yellow, uh, is the trail, uh, location or limits of the trails. And it's pretty easy to remember, on the east side of the east channel will be the, the, the city trail. On the west side of the west channel will be the city trail. Um, and then this, the red at the very top is the cost sharing agreement that the district has executed with, um, Google for, uh, resurfacing of the, uh, bay trail. And then I do want to point out one other portion in this slide. As you see the little highlighted on the west channel in the kind of upper middle, uh, portion of the, uh, slide up by the red, it says Google West Channel Project. That's 1,100 linear feet. And like I said, we submitted our permit applications in June of 2017. Shortly thereafter, Google came to the district, um, to partner on an enhancement project. And it was, it was timely because the district was looking for onsite mitigation to offset impacts to this project. And so we've been working together since 2017. I think it's taken a little longer with all the parties involved, including the city of Sunnyvale, who prepared the document, was the, uh, sequel lead for the Google project. So there's been a lot of players involved and it's taken a long time, but we're getting near the end of that. We're hoping that, uh, the district can finalize an agreement, uh, with Google in the next couple of months. Next slide, please. So the other thing that, uh, Mr. Taylor talked about, the shared perimeter wall, the, the joint project between the city and Valley Water. Um, you can see in red, that's the location where we're doing the joint wall. Um, as Mr. Taylor explained, that construction is currently estimated in 2023. Um, the alignment, at my understanding, is still kind of being, um, uh, determined because of the existing north or the wall proposed at the north side of the plant is underneath some PG&E lines. So I think there's some design constraints that, uh, the city is working with PG&E on, uh, to finalize that alignment. And then we have a pending, uh, cost sharing agreement for the wall that's gone through legal counsel a couple of times. So I think we're close on that and I think, um, you know, we're on target to, uh, to get that executed, um, to meet this construction schedule. Next slide, please. So just as a summary, just kind of where we're at. So the design is, is complete. We're, uh, working, we're talking to the city on a regular basis. And once the, uh, final or the 100% of design plans are, we're planning on to submit them to the city. Uh, we have been submitting plans, myself, I've been to the city many times over the years, uh, providing updates and also, uh, various versions of the construction, uh, drawings for their review. So we're working on, like I said, the final agreement with Google, hopefully in the next couple of months. And then we also are doing an EIR addendum because this Google modification requires us to do an addendum to our EIR. And then our permit discussions are ongoing. The hope is that we would get our, uh, resource agency permits in 2022 and then construction will be advertised upon receipt of the permits. And, and just to kind of, uh, explain why finalizing the agreement with Google is so important is because, uh, once we can finalize that agreement and we know what the mitigation, that the excess mitigation that will be created, uh, by the Google project that could be used by Valley Water to offset our impacts, then we can kind of conclude our, uh, analysis with the resource agencies on where the onsite mitigation will be and whether we need additional mitigation, either onsite or, or offsite. Next slide, please. And that concludes my brief update. Any questions by anybody? I'll turn it back over to Rochelle.
Thank you, Rochelle. Thank you, Stephen. Uh, any public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have, uh, Ms. Eileen McLaughlin.
Yes. Hi, Ms. McLaughlin. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Estramera, and good evening to members of, uh, council and of the board of directors. Um, I wanted to follow up on some of the questions that, you know, that Stephen was, uh, describing, uh, and talking about the creek and the ecological damage that I'm afraid is inevitable in, in performing this project and, uh, in, in the structures that you're planning on putting in the creek. Um, I am concerned there's a, you know, long distance of brackish habitat going up quite a ways and then you get down right, uh, near the bay and you have actual tidal habitat. And these are actually serving real, you know, excellent habitat functions today. Um, what are your mitigations that you're going to be doing to, uh, replace them? I, I'm quite concerned about, you know, how we can maintain the use of the channel and that function of the channel from an environmental perspective, uh, and, and with the least disruption over time that's possible. Uh, the, the overall width of the east channel is, uh, is, is such that it's barren at the top. And here we're losing major, major green vegetation and habitat down the channel. So if I could, you know, there could be a response, you know, that discusses that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin.
Chair Estramera, I can respond to that if you'd like.
Yes, yes, Stephen, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Ms. McLaughlin, uh, great questions. We, we share the same concerns, so that's why I pointed out the, the crossing on the slide at, um, the east channel at Caribbean. That is the only place that we're doing any work within the channel along the east, the east channel. So we have impacts there, but there's an existing bridge structure there that, uh, vegetation on that bridge doesn't grow. But, you know, we're, we've minimized our impacts of in-channel work. I also mentioned on the west channel, we're doing the work at Carl Road. So that's just a culvert there. We're not doing, um, uh, any work along the west channel all the way up until we get to, um, upstream of 101. Um, and then there is the Google enhancement. So most of our work is confined, uh, to the, to the top of banks and increasing the levee, resurfacing and installing floodwalls. On the east channel, where I showed the typical section for the rock, um, that is mainly upstream away from, um, tidal influence, uh, upstream of 101. And the reason for that is, oh, and I mentioned where the PG&E towers are, we're going to be using those rocks to stabilize those banks because that erosion ends up in the bay anyway. So it, it's better that we keep that, um, that material from eroding and, and just, you know, adding, adding sediment to the bay. So those are the only areas where we're adding rock slope protection. So I didn't want to mislead you that, you know, we're, we're rocking nine miles of channel. We're not doing that. It's very isolated and it's, it is isolated to just those locations where we have existing erosion or, and where the hydraulic model proves that we have velocities that require us to, to rock the slopes. Hope that answers your question.
Thanks, Stephen. Anybody else?
Yes, I have Ms. Gita Dev.
Yes, hi, Ms. Dev.
Uh, thank you again for letting us, um, speak here. I do have a couple of questions.
Yes.
First of all, thank you for the explanation, Stephen, about the rock. Uh, I had this similar concern when I saw that, but I understand better now. Um, my questions are more general. One is, one would hope that when you did this flood control, you would be looking at improving the ecology. Uh, this is an eco-innovation district and we were hoping to see something where we would see it being made more of a riparian corridor. Uh, that has been the conversation in all the community meetings and we're, I'm very dismayed to hear that there is absolutely no real consideration about making it an improvement. So I would like very much to hear your thoughts about that as the Moffett Park area being, um, an ecology area and counting on this water waste as part of that ecology for, um, for creatures, for birds, for insects and so forth. That was one area I would love to hear more. And the other was, um, when I looked at the box culverts that you proposed, the first thing that occurred to me when I went out there and looked at it after a, one of the high tides is that the water is always almost at the level of the road already. And while the box culverts may increase the capacity, what about the actual level of the water? I mean, would the road actually have to be raised? Um, and the box culverts put at a higher elevation than they are now? At the top of the box culverts? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dev. Any response?
Chair Estramera, would you like to respond?
Yes, please. Thank you, Stephen.
Okay, uh, very good question on that. You know, I, I, I do think we've looked at the channel from a flood protection project to try to increase, um, You know, I do think we've looked at the channel from a flood protection project to try to increase beneficial uses and ecological, biological enhancements. We've been working with this, like I said, on the Google project. That was for a widening channel concept where Google and Valley Water are jointly going to be installing in-stream native plants to try to enhance the creek in that section. You know, one of the questions have been, why don't we do that all other locations? And it's such a confined real estate, from a real estate standpoint, we cannot widen the channel because we'd be going into private property. And the private property has large office building complexes that are developed. So we're very limited on a right-of-way basis to expand the channel and try to create a riparian corridor. It's also very difficult to create a riparian corridor because this is not a natural watershed. It doesn't have an upstream watershed that promotes the riparian vegetation to be sustained through, you know, normal seasonal flow. The flow for Sunnyvale East and West is generated by storm drains. It's what drains off the streets and into the channel. But we are looking at different alternatives to provide, you know, slope blanketing and different native plant locations to enhance the channel. So like I said, and we've been working the last few years with Google on this project. The other question, you can remind me? The other portion of your question?
Thanks, Stephen.
Sorry?
It's really that, particularly at Caribbean and even downstream from Caribbean towards the bay.
Yeah, so will we have to raise the street level at Caribbean? It's already raised. If you know it goes over the east channel, you can see there's a hump in the road. And we're not making that hump any worse. And it's kind of hard to figure, to visualize, but we're such at the bay that the channel hydraulics are controlled really by the bay. And, you know, it's kind of like a backwater effect. And all it is is a big lake floating to another big lake, the San Francisco Bay. So the width of the channel, you know, it has very little to do with the hydraulics. And just to tell you, the box culvert was designed with the cells half-full of sediment. Because as you see underneath, there's a lot of bay muds that are captured, you know, under the bridges. And the channel gets full. But you're not, even if you went in there and dredged it out after a few rain events or tidal back and forth, those deposits are going to come right back. So you have to model it with that sediment in there. So to answer your question, yes, the bay, there's not a lot of freeboard per se with the existing structure. There won't be for the new structure. And that's why we have to build floodwalls at the downstream locations at Caribbean. Is that kind of, that's maybe a difficult concept to understand about the bay and how it's so controlling of the hydraulics? Any other questions?
I have no other, Mr. Chair, I have no other public comment. I do have four council members that have their hands raised.
Okay, any questions or comments from board members or council members?
Yes, I have four council members, so I'll start with Councilmember Din.
Thank you, and apologies again that my camera is off, just dealing with my internet. But thank you for the fantastic presentation. I think my first question is, when it comes to the cost sharing agreement with Google, is that fully signed? And at a high level, can you just give me some ballpark breakdown of how the costs are being split, just from percentages, not even net values?
So this is regarding the Google trail?
Yep.
The Bay Trail portion?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the Google was going to like resurface that with decomposed granite? And, you know, that's, we're going to end up using that to construct the project for access. So Google was, you know, understood that, hey, we may go out there and kind of clean it up a little bit, but we don't want to do the final thing because we just turn around and tear it up and then have to replace it again. So that was the agreement there. It's, you know, it's just because, you know, it's like the whole, you know, the whole public thing where somebody paves a new street and the next day they're out there trenching it. So we're trying to get ahead of that. We do our work and do some damage to the trail. And then we come back in and fix it one time and not have, you know, the public concern that we're redoing and spending public dollars twice.
Ah, okay, now that explains it well, so thank you for that. And then my other question is more just like a basic, general high-level one as well. When it comes to where the channels are meeting the bay, is there any thinking about or is there any potential impact of sea level rise and climate change on that? Is that going to affect, you know, water going back in or where the water actually meeting it? And yeah, I think that's basically the question, just high-level on how that looks, that interplay works.
Okay, both the Sunnyvale East and West hydraulics are based on two feet of sea level rise.
Ah, okay, perfect.
So it was incorporated in the design.
Ah, okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
And Councilmember Din, I want to apologize for mispronouncing your name. Mr. Chair, I have Mayor-
You're totally fine. No worries.
Mayor Klein has his hand raised.
Yes, Mayor Klein?
Sure, several questions, one of which is, you talked about the agreement with Google and as kind of the next step in a series of things to get to an actual construction bid and then the EIR update and all that. So what is kind of the holdup for that? And, you know, is there anything that we can do to get that approval moving forward? Because, you know, I look at that construction bid and you currently listed as sometime in 2022, but it's after the resource agency permitting before you can actually put that up to bid. You know, when we were here almost three years ago, we were guessing that the construction bid was going out in 2019. So what, you know, it looks like it's a waterfall of first Google, then agency, and then the bid. Is that correct or am I missing something?
You're pretty close. It was agency, we submitted the permits in June of 2017. And then shortly thereafter, the resource agencies wanted more information on our permits. And one of their comments on the permits was, on the permit applications was, they wanted to see more onsite mitigation and set back floodplain concept. And about two months later, Google came to us with that exact concept. And like I said, we can't do that in other places because we don't have the right-of-way. The only reason that this works is because Google is dedicating a bunch of property on both sides of the west channel to facilitate this kind of enhancement project. So then it got to the, you know, the Google project had to be, had to have Sequel completed. And the city took the lead on that. In the meantime, we didn't stop what we were doing. We still, you know, were firing right-of-way and finishing the design and working with the treatment plant folks on the shared wall. So it was still going on. It's just that now that we need the Google to answer your question, why that's a priority, the Google agreement, is because it is going to create onsite mitigation. And that onsite mitigation is going to be used by Google to offset their impacts as well as the excess to be used for the district flood protection project to offset our comment, to offset our impacts and to address comments from the resource agencies. We originally in our permit applications offered to go onsite mitigation because of the lack of right-of-way to do in-stream and do in-channel mitigation. There's just not a lot of room. So to address that comment of doing onsite mitigation, here was Google that said, "We're going to widen the channel and do onsite mitigation and have excess mitigation for it." So, and we just got through that process of getting those numbers done. And now we actually have finite numbers of what those onsite mitigation will be versus what mitigation we do need for the project impact. So you needed to have that, those numbers, those mitigation numbers to be able to get to the end with the resource agencies as far as, okay, here's your impacts. Here's what's going to be supplied by Google's project. Here's where the other mitigation is coming from, so you have a balance. Here's our permits.
Okay, and so, you know, if there's anything that we can do or I can do to expedite that agreement? You know, ultimately, it is this waterfall of items, whether or not it's other agencies, it's the agreement with Google. You know, we all want to kind of move this forward, especially as this mitigation, once it's implemented, mitigating the long-term risk as far as flooding and all that, which is beneficial for everyone at the end of the day. So, you know, definitely, I'm hoping that things have now been cleared away and we can basically close off these last punch items as quickly as possible and see the bid, you know, early in 2022 as opposed to the end of 2022 from that standpoint.
I appreciate the city's support on this, you know, the whole process with Google and the development and being the lead with Sequel. And nobody wants this project constructed more than I do. I trust you, trust me on that.
And I appreciate that. One thing that I had a question on is monitoring. So what monitoring is ultimately being put in place as far as potential flood monitoring during, you know, let's say, king tides or other kind of tidal conditions that could conceivably lead to flooding?
So what we typically do, not just on Sunnyvale East and West, but all our channels in the county, after a significant event, we go out there and actually take survey of the high-water marks. And then compare the flow data with what the queue was in the channel or the flow, you know, the flow regime and see, compare it to our model and see if our model is accurately assessing what the water surface elevation will, you know, is. So we have a theoretical water surface elevation for a certain amount of water. And we basically verify that after significant storm events. So, you know, then we may have to adjust the model or do other some, maybe do more maintenance in certain areas, less maintenance than others. So there's a constant verification process that Valley Water does.
Thank you, and that's kind of post-storm event. What monitoring is done, is there, or is there monitoring done during a storm event?
Oh, yeah.
What's the mechanism for?
We have a flood information team, actually flood team that goes out and basically are on-call when there's a significant event coming where we think there's going to be potential for flooding. And we know, you know, it's no mystery where the hotspots are in the whole county. You know, we know where it's going to flood first on every channel. So, you know, we position people in those locations. We, you know, in the lower South County, we'll actually have equipment onsite where those sites are. And other places in the county, we'll have people there, whatever's needed, to assist with that flooding that we know can occur at that location. For instance, sandbags or, you know, different type of pumping equipment. Where in South County, we have more rural, where we have more equipment that could be available to help with flooding.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for your answers.
Thank you.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes. Councilmember Larson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And thank you, staff, for the answer to the mayor's first question because that was something I also wanted to ask about. The permitting of both the Google enhancement and then also the wall along our water pollution control plant. Those are very important to Sunnyvale. And so whatever we can do to get the permitting completed expeditiously is important for us. I did want to ask about the Google enhancement because as we are working on our Moffett Park specific plan, which is the next item on the agenda tonight, it would be good to see if the Google enhancement could become a model for what we can do elsewhere along the east and west channel. And I realize that you don't, that Valley Water doesn't have the land to do that. But as the land use permitting agency, the city does have some levers that we can fold to encourage developers as they redevelop properties to actually do more things like the Google enhancement. And it would be great to see that as much as possible along the east and west channel. And so my question is, what can we do as a city to preserve that opportunity, to work with Valley Water to make sure that our plans and our schedules line up so that we can continue to work towards that goal?
So I think we're, the perimeter wall, shared perimeter wall, is a good example. We've been talking about that for maybe two and a half years. We've been meeting about the design consultant. And we've had some good back and forth. I think we're ahead of the curve on that. So I think there's been a good collaboration by both parties on getting that to the finish line. As far as doing the enhancements along the east and west channel, I think Valley Water and our boards always show that they're willing, willingness to explore those opportunities, especially if it's going to enhance the environment. At this, you know, we're kind of chasing our tail because this project's been on the books for so long. We want to get it built. Just because it's built doesn't mean it can't be, portions of it can't be altered after construction or even during construction if it's not. If it's, for instance, if we're in construction and we haven't done some portion of the east channel upstream and there's an opportunity to do that, we can always, you know, eliminate that portion of the work and do some kind of modified design at that via a change order or a redesign in that section. So that's something we can do during construction. And then in post-construction, we can always modify the project after it's constructed.
Good, that's very good to hear because I think that collaboration between the city and Valley Water is going to be very important in enhancing as much of those channels as possible in the Moffett Park area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cisneros?
Councilmember Cisneros?
Yeah, thank you very much. And wonderful presentation, very informative. And I wanted to first say that the members of the public really took my first question. I'm very concerned about environmental impacts, especially in this region, but it was really nice to hear from you all that it is also a major concern and it's been very well thought through. So thank you very much for that. And my other question was, what does the life cycle and maintenance look like for these walls and flood protection measures that we have? And is Google going to share in any costs associated with maintenance or replacing as necessary?
Yeah, so there's a couple of parts there. Overall, we have a stream maintenance program that we utilize for all our channels. And we negotiate 10-year stream maintenance permits every 10 years. And so we would do routine maintenance and that would be sediment control or sediment removal and vegetation control. So if there's sediment that's in this channel, we really, like I said, because of much of the east and west channel are tidal influence, it doesn't make a lot of sense to remove bay muds because after a few tidal cycles, it's right back. So there's going to be very little sediment removal on the downstream portions of either channel. I would say very little or none. It's more upstream of 101 where you're outside of tidal influence where sediment removal occurs now just because of the erosion sites that I showed you on the east channel because of the various lining around the PG&E towers that throws the water back into banks and causes erosion. Like I said, with the isolated rock slope protection we're putting on those areas, we're hoping that that minimizes maintenance and long-term maintenance. Because it's not, you know, nobody wants to have to spend the money, you know, yearly doing maintenance if we can avoid it. So that's what we're trying to do, but that's our program for maintenance. And as far as the Google project, the previous council members mentioned the fact that, you know, we need to get this going and we need to do this and we all agree that. But that agreement not only covers cost, but it covers the maintenance, and you hit on that. So figuring out who's going to be maintaining what and where is a component of that agreement. It's not something that's stopping it. It's just something that needs to be, you know, worked out and coordinated and finalized. And that's been going on for some time and we're very close on it.
Glad to hear it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have Councilmember Melton.
Councilmember Melton?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I don't have any questions. I just wanted-
Yeah, thank you Chair. Um, I don't, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to make a comment that, um, I feel immense gratitude to Valley Water for your amazing partnership on these critical pieces of infrastructure in Sunnyvale. I mean, the original purpose was flood control. Uh, and now, um, we're accomplishing through Valley Water's leadership a revitalization of both of these very important channels. Um, and one of the things that will be accomplished, our, our, our Valley Water project leader mentioned it and I'll, I'll remember this, is the public use trails. And it's going to be the west side of the West Channel and the east side of the East Channel. Um, and that has a tremendous benefit in Sunnyvale in terms of connectivity and accomplishing, um, some very important policy objectives in Sunnyvale about active transportation uses and getting, uh, a network built of people, uh, who are able to walk or, uh, use active transportation uses to get to their destinations. And so, um, yes, more faster. Thank you, Valley Water, for everything you're doing on this really complicated project. And thank you very much.
I have, uh, Ms. Sue Tippett that would like to speak.
Yes, Ms. Tippett. Uh, Sue?
Thank you Chair Astromira. Um, yes, um, it's a discussion about Google and trails. I just wanted to, uh, mention while we're all here that, uh, is a part of the, um, the Google project in Sunnyvale East and the trail project that we all are working together on, there is a component of that that will be coming back to the City Council and that will be, um, an, um, amendment or a redoing of the joint use agreement. And this, um, evolved through the work with Google and where the trail is located and what improvements that they are proposing on, um, the Valley Water right of way. So, um, the gist of it will be the same, but there'll be some, uh, just adjustments in the language. So I just want to let you know that that will be coming along.
Thank you.
Have no other hands raised at this time.
Okay. Uh, and thank you for the discussion. I just quickly mentioned, you know, that once completed, the, um, this project is going to protect 1,618 homes, 47 acres of highly valuable industrial and government lands from a 100-year flood. Um, this flood protection, uh, project that could save Sunnyvale from over $44 million in flood damages from a serious flood event, which we know happens. Uh, and lastly, the sediment control measures within the project will also improve water quality in Sunnyvale Creeks. Just to mention a few things. Uh, no motions required for this, uh, for this report. So we'll go right along to the next, uh, agenda item. Um, and, uh, we'll turn it over to, uh, Mayor Klein.
Thank you Chair Astromira. Uh, our next item is an update on the Moffett Park specific plan, working very closely with the last item. Uh, City Manager, can you introduce the staff who will be reporting on this?
Yes, thank you Mayor. And the Moffett, Moffett Park specific plan is one of the largest land use plans the city's undertaken in many years. Um, Moffett Park is all that, uh, area in Sunnyvale, north of Highway 237, so it's a very large area. Um, there's a, a lot of tremendous possibilities for us to see redevelopment in this area. And so we're working through a land use planning process, um, there. And first I wanted to just say thank you for district staff who have been involved in our stakeholder group meeting. So we've been meeting on this for a couple of years and, uh, district staff have been participating. So I really appreciate that. Um, with that, I'd like to turn it over to the other Michelle King. Um, our Michelle King is a principal planner in our community development department and she'll be presenting an overview of the Moffett Park specific plan process.
Thank you, City Manager. And someday all the Michelle Kings will have to meet. Um, I'll let, uh, the presentation load here. So, um, again, um, my name is Michelle King, the principal planner of the city of Sunnyvale, um, leading the effort for the Moffett Park specific plan update. Um, please, uh, next slide. As discussed, that Moffett Park specific plan area is a very large area at the north end of the city of Sunnyvale, about 1,270 acres. Um, it is bounded at the south by Highway 237 and at the north by, um, the Moffett Federal Airfield directly to the west. The, um, city facilities include the wastewater treatment plant, the closed landfill, the smart center, um, and they, um, several recreational facilities including Bayland Park, private ball field. And, um, is that North Caribbean Drive. It's very north edge. And Bay, as I mentioned, Bay Park, parklands to be used. Next slide. So the city council's been working on, um, with staff, staff and others on the, um, development of a, of an update to the Moffett Park specific plan. And one of the critical aspects of this update is the vision, um, in which the Moffett Park area is an integral part of the city and is well-connected eco-innovation district with a diverse mix of uses that serve as a model of resilience, climate protection, equity and economic opportunity. The Moffett Park area is critically located next to the, um, bay and is the area of the city of Sunnyvale that is most subject to sea level rise. It is also home to many, um, office employers, including major employers such as Google. Next slide. So some of the other guiding principles, um, to the plan area are to look for opportunities and, and policies that will, um, strive for resilience and, um, equality in the equity in the plan area. The plan area to be vibrant and inclusive, um, have a diverse economy and prosperity, um, be accessible, um, pedestrian-friendly and, uh, connect to the city's efforts ongoing to the active transportation plan. Have dynamic and connected public spaces, including, um, open space that is both ecologically focused and recreationally focused. Have a healthy and biodiverse environment, which is a big, um, change to the existing built infrastructure in Moffett Park, which is primarily asphalt, um, and was built as an industrial park in the past. So this is a big change. And continue Moffett Park in its leading, um, the Silicon Valley innovation and emerging technology. Next slide. So what is a specific plan? Um, a specific plan is a comprehensive planning, um, tool for, um, an area that is smaller than the city. It establishes a vision and guiding, guiding principles for that particular area, defines policy and development standards, and has a strong focus on implementation. Um, because a specific plan changes the land use in the plan area, most likely that's followed by needed changes in infrastructure, which is why implementation is so important. Next slide. Um, some requirements for specific plans are looking at the distribution and location and extent of the uses of land, including open space. Um, the extent of intensity of marriage components in transportation and infrastructure. And again, in the plan area, we have the advent, advantageous, um, existing, um, light rail system and, uh, and bus system as well as private transportation. And, uh, ongoing effort in putting in green link, uh, sorry, green link and active transportation improvement. Um, the specific plan needs a program of implementation measures and, um, has a statement of relationship of the plan to the general plan, which is the city's guiding document. Next slide. So I won't go through all of these, um, but we got some, um, direction from both the planning station and the city council to come up with a, uh, comprehensive engagement strategy. Look at the potential economic impacts of adding housing to the plan area. The plan area has been, has been, uh, only office and industrial uses up until this point. So this is a change in the mix of land uses in the plan area. Also, there's retail in the plan area, supposed to be increased in retail and the addition of housing. Um, redefine the Moffett Park area as ecological and innovation district, um, capitalizing on the ecological potential for the plan area and the existing innovation. Um, continue looking at improvements in both, um, in all of modes of mobility, including pedestrian, bicycle and transit connectivity. Looking at changing the way the urban design standards function on Moffett Park, improve mobility opportunities. Um, having an implementation strategy for a long-term look at needed infrastructure. And of course, um, complying with CEQA and looking at the environmental impacts of the, of the project. Next slide. So there've been, um, quite a few meetings with Moffett Park over the last two years, many meetings. But this is a short recap of the meetings we've had in the last, um, 12 months, including having, um, very comprehensive public workshops on sea level rise and climate change, um, specifically in the plan area, um, the potential, um, solutions for transportation and infrastructure in Moffett Park, including mobility, sea level rise, um, infrastructure as well as, um, future sewer and water needs. And the potential changes to the land use, housing and open space plan for the plan area and what the market and economic ramifications of those changes might be. Um, in May of 2021, the city council gave direction to the staff on a new land use concept for the plan area to be studied. And in August of 2021, um, the notice of preparation for the EIR was released and we received comments. Next slide. So this is the, um, land use direction we received from the city council. And you can see that, um, the previous land use plan was all office, um, with some industrial in the purple and office being blue. Now we have an additional, um, land use designations that are, um, uh, residential in the yellow and, um, mixed use designation in the orange. And then the, um, designation that is hatched, that's a, that area that could be either residential or office. Um, there's a little bit of institutional use on this map that's existing, which is kind of in dark purple. But this new land use direction would allow for 20,000 new housing units um, and 10 million, um, square feet of new office, um, net new office development. Um, next slide. Since goes over this land use program in a little more detail, um, the land use program is part, the land use map is primarily looking at what those new uses will be. But, um, critical aspects of how a new plan, um, will function are looking at how open space and urban ecology will serve this new part of the city that will be a vibrant neighborhood that will have residential, office and open spaces in it. So part of our plan will do is an ongoing study of open space and urban ecology for the plan area, including, um, adding parks and plazas and other open spaces and connected network of eco patches, including, um, eco corridors and linear parks that could be created by setbacks from the existing East and West Channel as well as other, um, standalone ecological features. Next slide. Um, of course, adding housing to the plan area will also require looking at community facilities and services, including public schools and public safety, as well as looking at ways to, um, uh, enhance and improve the network of streets and paths and connections in the plan area, including looking at ways to cross the existing channels, um, specifically and importantly for, um, transit, bikes and, and pets. Next slide. So the plan requires, um, uh, environmental impact reports. And we are doing a comprehensive review of all of these topics, um, including, um, importantly, hydrology and water quality. Um, we'll be doing, um, studies of geology and soils and, and, um, uh, water supply assessment. Next slide. We've had, um, several really productive meetings in, in technical working groups, um, in our technical, with our technical working group. We've also had many one-on-one meetings in, with all of our partners in this process, including Valley Water. It's been very productive. And we've also participated in the shoreline visioning process with Valley Water. So I feel like we've made a lot of strides in seeing how Moffett Park can connect to the goals of Valley Water as well as the city of Sunnyvale. Next slide. So we have a really, um, uh, comprehensive website that has not only the project updates, but all of the materials from every, um, public event we've held so far, as well as all the technical studies and informative videos. I also wanted to make sure, because I think I skipped it in the land use discussion, that to be clear, that this is a very long-range plan. This is a 20 to 30-year plan. So the level of growth that's anticipated is not going to occur. Um, as soon as the plan is adopted, it has a long rollout and it also serves to, um, meet the city's affordable housing and overall housing goals that the state requires that the city and the city wants to meet for the citizens. So this is a plan that has many purposes, um, one of which is providing future housing opportunities. And that concludes my presentation. Oh, sorry, does not, I lied. So, I think I'm out of time. So here's the, uh, planning process overview. Um, talked a little bit about those, um, events that we've had in 2021 already. And we're in the process of, um, analyzing and producing the technical studies that are needed for the plan and the EIR. We are hoping to come back to city council and to the public in a series of study sessions towards the end of this year and the early of next year that will focus on open space and urban ecology and opportunities to enhance, um, those features in the plan area as well as mobility, um, and transportation. With the third topic of being, um, land use. At the same time, we are developing the policies of the plan, which will be part of those discussions as well as the body of the document, um, and drafting the EIR. And we're hoping to come back for plan adoption to decision-makers in, um, the summer and fall of 2022. Next slide. Not one more. So, um, next steps are, um, the study sessions that I mentioned, further collaboration with the technical working group members, stakeholders and advocates. So we have really, um, again, gotten a lot out of our conversations with Valley Water on many topics. And we, we, um, we'll be coming back to them with some of the results of our policies around urban ecology that I think dov, dov, dov tail nicely with some of the goals of Valley Water. And I think there's a lot of crossover. Um, we continue with online engagement. Um, there will be more, um, opportunities for people to engage in the materials for the plan online as we go through the study session materials. And again, we're drafting the specific plan and the EIR over the next six months or so. Um, and we plan to have a series of public hearings, of course, by the commission of the council, hoping to finish in fall of 2022. And I think that concludes it for real. There you go.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, we will now go to public comment. I'll open the public hearing. Since we remain in a virtual setting, I'll ask the public to use the virtual raised hand button or dial star nine on your telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. The clerk will then ask you to unmute your microphone. It's your turn to address the council and the district board. Speakers will be given three minutes to speak. Uh, Board Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak inside?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As of right now, I have three. The first is Ms. Julian Pendleton.
Hello. Uh, my name is Juliana Pendleton and I am the Environmental Advocacy Assistant for the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. I have participated in the Moffett Park specific plan process, provide, providing public comments, attending meetings, and providing scoping comments on the notice of preparation for the EIR. The plan to transform Moffett Park into an eco-district is exciting to us if it truly reflects the ecology of the area, enhances habitat and protects wildlife. Our mission as an organization is to promote the enjoyment, understanding and protection of birds and other wildlife by engaging people of all ages in birding, education and conservation. We support the guiding principle and Sunnyvale's goal of a healthy and biodiverse environment. In the context of the plan, we advocated for the protection and expansion of wetlands and natural areas and for natural big buffers along waterways. Valley Water collaboration will be critical, critical and is currently critical to the success of the Moffett Park specific plan. And we hope Sunnyvale, Valley Water and the landowners will be transparent and engage the community deeply in designing the future of Moffett Park. We had some positive discussions with Lockheed and Google, uh, but some questions still remain, especially pertaining to the water, waterways and wetlands that go through or adjacent to the plan area. Questions about storm water management in the face of sea level rise and questions about impacts of increased recreational activity on levees having negative impacts on migratory birds. Last week, walking along the East Channel- Last week, walking along the east channel, I had the great pleasure of seeing a red-tailed hawk and a beautiful green heron. I hope to see many more of these in the future, and maybe even a burrowing owl. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next member of the public is Ms. Jennifer Chang-Hederly.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jennifer Chang-Hederly. I'm the Sierra Club's Bay Alive Campaign Coordinator. The Loma Prieta Chapter has been closely following and participating in the Moffett Park specific plan update process, and we continue to hope that the city will lean into the ecology part of its eco-innovation vision for the district. To us, that means protecting the biodiversity and sustainability of wetlands and open space, both within and adjacent to the plan area, optimizing for natural and nature-based sea level rise resilience, and maximizing urban canopy, habitat-rich open space, and low-impact recreation opportunities throughout the area. We are anxiously awaiting specifics about how the Moffett Park specific plan will address those issues. I want to quickly thank Google for taking a number of environmental groups to tour the flood channels and other site features. We appreciate their efforts to explore viable alternatives to flood walls on parts of the west channel, and their work with the city and the water district to figure out how to make them happen. And I'm excited to hear council members interested in exploring other opportunities along the channels to follow that model. We also appreciate their willingness to envision and invest in multi-benefit open spaces that go well beyond corporate landscaping to serve community needs. So we'd really like to see the city engage all the major property owners and developers in Moffett Park to be partners in similar solutions, as well as in funding for future shoreline protection projects. We're also concerned about water supply. Your discussions tonight painted a pretty dire picture, so we look forward to hearing how that plays out vis-à-vis the Moffett Park specific plan. We understand that the Santa Clara Valley Water Commission has raised concerns that limited water supplies could impede the feasibility of regional housing requirements in the coming cycle, and the housing being studied for this specific plan far exceeds Sunnyvale's RENA numbers. So it's critically important to understand where the water will come from to support this project. We hope to see a thorough and realistic water supply assessment in the EIR that identifies all water sources and reflects increasingly severe climate change impacts on drought and precipitation patterns, that looks at system supply and infrastructure constraints, and considers the cumulative demand, including from modern commercial uses and from other large master planning efforts in Sunnyvale. We are really pleased to see this joint session on the calendar, and I look forward to your discussion. Thank you again for the chance to comment.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the last member of the, oh, sir, I have two more. The first one is Ms. Eileen McLaughlin.
Good evening again, council members and members of the board. I wanted to come back and catch up on some comments and things that we've talked about here tonight, because a lot of these different items kind of flow into one another. And so I wanted to go back to, I mean, when Stephen Franti was describing and discussing to Gita's question about what was or was it possible on the east channel, and I would like to ask the, you know, that there be a bigger picture view here. I'm a huge fan of the Calavazos Creek and Santa Moschino Creek project in the water district, and it has enormous challenges, but it has enormous future-type goals with a new vision, and that's what we have here. I was glad to hear Councilmember Larson ask about what we could do to work on the channels, particularly the east channel, to change its, you know, what it is now into something much more ecologically valuable and inviting. And, you know, I know with great respect to Steve Franti, he said it could not be riparian, but if you visit the flood basin, which is known as the Charleston Basin and North Bay Shore, it's a beautiful riparian-like area, and so let's see what's possible. And I'm hoping that there is some way that the city, the water district, and Google might be a combination, could work together and come up with a new vision of what could sprout in that channel and serve the purposes of the Moffett Park specific plan, as Sunnyvale's Michelle King said. The plan is to try to maybe try to get some setback from the creek and make it more of an ecological area for everyone to enjoy. So I'm hoping that that idea can sprout from a seed here tonight and be a future project that we can all look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last member of the public I have is Ms. Getta Dev.
Thank you again for the opportunity to comment here. I want to emphasize how important we feel that some of the comments that were just made by Jennifer Hederly and also by Eileen McLaughlin are for the Moffett Park and for Valley Water. I understood very clearly, Stephen, and Rochelle had mentioned this earlier, that the problem of real estate and the easement that you're given is very restrictive, and it's private property. However, once again, with the strong emphasis that we're putting on an eco-innovation district, that the whole community is looking to this area, any possibilities for making, expanding the channel to be more riparian maybe in the future, where those could be mitigations as well? That could be an encouragement, an inducement, and incentive to open up the channel for mitigation possibilities. I do want to mention that this whole area is much lower than the water in the channels, and therefore, one of our main concerns, which we've articulated to Michelle and others, is that the open spaces have not been recognized in the land use plan. And the open spaces in our case here in Moffett Park are going to have to be very multi-use. They have to be habitats. They also potentially have to be flood retention areas. Eileen McLaughlin mentioned the Charleston Basin flood retention area in North Bay Shore, which is an extremely important part of the flood control. And the water, it can then be pumped into Stevens Creek, and in this case, I suppose water could be pumped into the east and the west channels. So those are areas, I think Councilmember Larson really raised an important point. This is something that a number of people have articulated concerns about, that these two channels are considered our riparian corridors as part of this ecology district. And any particular ways to incentivize opening them up and having setbacks along these corridors, encouraging planting native trees, encouraging habitat along these corridors, is really key to the Moffett Park, as well as a lot of the possibilities of storing and saving floodwaters in the open spaces that really we need to somehow articulate in our land use plan. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment.
Thanks, Gita.
Mr. Mayor, that is all the members of the public at this time.
Okay. I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board and council for discussion. Are there any questions or comments? First up is Councilmember Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to underscore the massive scale of Moffett Park, because that was not apparent to me initially, just looking at maps, but after walking around out there, I got a sense of how big it was. And it was pointed out to me that if you compare the area of Moffett Park to downtowns of major cities, Moffett Park is actually 50% bigger than downtown Portland, Oregon. It's also 50% larger than San Francisco's financial district plus South of Market combined. So this is a really massive opportunity. It's, you know, very important to the city of Sunnyvale. We're putting a lot of resources into developing a very comprehensive, long-term plan, and clearly, resources are extremely important to this area, water especially, making sure that we have enough water supply to support what we're looking at. But again, I just wanted to underscore just how massive this plan in this area is. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate, you know, those comments, Councilmember Larson. It is a very large piece of Sunnyvale, but it has a lot of opportunity. You know, ultimately, what the Moffett Park specific plan is conceivably doing is designing a new city in the north half of our city. And I think that, you know, with all the kind of looking at it from a larger view of community design and not just a quick piecemeal, I appreciate, you know, all the residents that have been part of this, as well as, you know, all the different landowners. A lot of times, you have, let's say, barriers of entry for people that want to come to the table and look at the bigger picture of what can be done, and I appreciate the different landowners, developers that have really taken a step back and looked at conceivably what could be done from an environmental standpoint, from an open space standpoint, as well as housing, retail, office space, and not just looking at it as a business park. So kudos to staff on their outreach meetings and getting the right people to take part. Are there any other comments or questions on this from the board or from the council? I see none, so I will again pass it back to the chair for the next agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor Klein. I'd like to turn the things back over to our CEO, Calendar, for the next agenda item, 2.6, the update on the San Francisco Shoreline Project.
All right. Working to get my way off from mute there. Good evening. Again, we are going to go back to talking about flood protection for the last item on the agenda tonight, and this project is part of the South Bay Salt Ponds Restoration Project, which aims to restore 16,500 acres of tidal wetlands. And this project directly involves all of the South Bay cities that meet the San Francisco Bay. The project's important because climate change is real, and it's projects like these that will ultimately protect shoreline cities from sea level rise. And even though this project is the beneficiary of the Safe Clean Water Program, it's also the beneficiary of the 9B Area County Measure AA funds, and even then, we cannot do this alone as a region, as federal support from the Army Corps of Engineers is still much needed. And locally, we'll also need the support from the city of Sunnyvale for this project to ultimately be successful. I'm going to turn this back over to Deputy Operating Officer Rochelle Blank to take us through this side.
Thank you, CEO Calendar, again Rochelle Blank, and I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I'll be, I have three short slides, but I do have a lot to share. So as CEO Calendar mentioned, this is being done in coronation with the Army Corps and the California State Coastal Conservancy. The Coastal Conservancy had bought up the majority of these former cargo salt ponds between Coyote Creek and the Palo Alto Flood Basin, with the exception of two ponds, one that is owned by the city of San Jose, Pond A18, the two, Pond A4, which is owned by Valley Water. And then these two ponds aren't part of the former salt ponds. These are part of the city of Sunnyvale's treatment ponds. Basically, in Santa Clara County, the project is running from San Francisco Creek in the west, all the way to Coyote Creek in the east, and then we have 101 that borders in roughly also the sea level rise tidal influence area. So the shoreline project is a federal congressional authorized project by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, together partnered with Valley Water Coastal Conservancy, as well as the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, since they are in ownership of these salt ponds. The intent of the project is to identify and recommend flood risk management and ecosystem restoration along the South San Francisco Bay shoreline for potential federal funding. In Santa Clara County, the shoreline runs approximately 18 miles in total. So the project is recognized as of important significance to preserve the economic development of the low-lying community of the potential of this region. Santa Clara County shoreline is at risk to coastal flooding now and due to extreme storm events with climate change, as well as in the future due to rising seas. The county is among those in California risk for the highest potential damages from coastal flooding. For the project, the Army Corps is the federal sponsor, and Valley Water and Coastal Conservancy are known as the local sponsors. So this slide shows, again, from San Francisco Creek all the way to Coyote Creek, and as well as what the Army Corps has done. We began studying this area with the Army Corps in 2005, and they began looking at the entire expanse from San Francisco Creek to Coyote Creek. And while doing so, they determined what they call economic impact areas, which began with EI A1 and increased all the way up to EI A11. EI A1 is in the city of Palo Alto, EI A11 is in North San Jose, right there. And basically, what they found is it took five years, they were studying and collecting a lot of existing data to establish what they call the baseline condition in order to then move into the alternatives. And it was just taking a long time, increasing the study timeline, increasing the study costs. And in 2010, we kind of paused the study and said, at that point, they had enough information to kind of know some damage assessments in the various areas for Palo Alto, for Mountain View, Sunnyvale, and North San Jose. And we, Valley Water, and Coastal Conservancy recommended the Corps break this off in pieces. And so they did move forward in 2011 with the first study phase over here in EI A11 in North San Jose, and the intent was to include the area down essentially from the Albison Marina to Coyote Creek, just east of the suburb of San Jose, Santa Clara's Regional Wastewater Facility, as well as the pocket of ponds numbered as A9 through A14 and potentially A18. Sorry, I ran out of my own slides. So as I mentioned, the study was just taking too long. We broke off the first chunk, began with Phase 1, and it's approximately four miles to the 18, and we successfully got to a chief's report by 2015. And at that point, it was authorized for design and construction with a project cost of $194 million. Following that shortly afterwards, the Corps had an opportunity to receive the full federal cost share of funding all at once, and of the $194 million, their federal cost share was $124 million, and they received it from the Bipartisan Budget Act, and that was intended for the Corps' share to cover all the design and construction costs. So Phase 1 of the shoreline project has since realized significant cost growth. We've been trying to get this piece of, the first two miles of levy approximately, out to construction since 2018, and we have just successfully awarded a contract this year. However, in doing so, we, it became very apparent that this project's cost group has increased significantly. It has increased from $194 million to $518 million. It's a 267% cost increase, and this cost increase is now posing a significant challenge to be able to fully implement even this phase of the study in partnership with the Corps. Their federal share is fixed, and we had planned for an approximate $200 million project, and our local share is fixed as well. In 2019, the Corps did receive some federal funding to go ahead and begin advancing the next feasibility study phase, and that occurred and was intended to cover EI As 1 all the way through 10. And within the first three months of this quarter of their, what they call smart planning study, it was realized again that this was still too much of a piece to take off all at once, and they escalated Phase 2 to specifically EI As 1 through 4 between San Francisco Creek and permanent creek. And the majority of the area covered is the city of Palo Alto. And the Palo Alto Flood Basin, and in conjunction with the Coastal Conservancy, their South Bay Salt Pond Restoration Project was far and much beyond to look like they could cover the the remaining piece of Mountain View. So this project has progressed. The smart planning, Corps' smart planning process is three, to conduct a feasibility study in three years with $3 million. And within the first year and a half of this effort, the Corps said, because of California's strict stringent environmental laws and requirements, we're going to, they're going to have to recommend increasing the study by an additional three years and by an additional $3 million. And they had to go through an exemption waiver package that was sent up to headquarters in DC for approval. That waiver package was just very recently approved, so now we're looking at Phase 2 being almost a six-year study and at a cost of almost $6 million, cost shared 50/50. Lastly, we're waiting for funding to still come in on Phase 3. So the Corps at this point doesn't have any funding for Phase 3. We're patiently waiting, there's still an opportunity that something may come in for 2022. But with the way the cost growths have increased for these projects, not only for the construction cost of the nearly 267%, but feasibility study cost of double up to $6 million, you know, we do have concerns of how we're going to be able to advance and implement fully these projects, three phases of projects on our own. For the last two years, we've been working closely with SFI, ESA, looking at a vision process for the area in Sunnyvale. And we are working closely with not only the city of Sunnyvale, but NASA, Google, Lockheed, Fish and Wildlife Service, Coastal Conservancy, and the goal was to develop a vision document to be able to be ready to kick off this third study phase with the Army Corps when they received money for that phase to begin. But as I noted, you know, the project's a significant cost growth. We're not sure how we can make these three phases of projects forward any longer on our own. We can't shoulder this type of cost for a regional project alone, and we need to work with our local partners and the cities in full partnership, not only in planning, designing, construction, but also with considering financial contributions from the local partners to fully implement these projects. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and take questions and open this up for discussion.
Thank you, Rochelle. See what we have, oh, that's the first public.
I don't sound allowed to say two.
First public comment. Thank you for sharing. Next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no public raising their hand at this time. I do have a vice mayor and the mayor.
Okay, great, well, we'll go with the vice mayor.
Yeah, hello Rochelle. So first of all, thank you for being able to, you know, concisely discuss the complexity of a multi-multi-multi-governmental type project that's going on. I can't even imagine how you keep this all straight. I think my comments, I agree with the dogs on floor one. And I'm, as you can imagine, I'm just really disappointed that the Sunnyvale portion of this is ending up as Phase 3, and that, you know, we're behind the funding, the eight ball, and I'm disappointed with the terms, and these are not, I'm not directing at you, Rochelle, you know, we're not sure what's going to happen, and we're patiently waiting. And I would just offer, and maybe the mayor can be able to confirm this, but from the city of Sunnyvale's perspective, this is really a key, important thing for us to go ahead and do, and get started, because it can't get done until it gets started. And I would just like to offer and request that we somehow find a way and we stop patiently waiting. I realize the multi-government agency issue, you know, but what we can do to try and do advocacy at, you know, the state or the senate and congressional level to try and push on money on this, but for the city of Sunnyvale to be in a, we don't even know what's going to happen, is just a horrible place for us to be. And I'm not pointing a finger at anybody here as to why that's happening. I just want to offer that I think it's really important for us to collectively find a way to get us out of the patiently waiting model, and we need to be aggressively reminding our representatives in the federal government and at the state government just how critically important this is to be able to get it started. I don't even want to talk about the end date of it yet, I just want to, we need to get that it's started, and those are my comments. But thank you very much, I really appreciate the work and the complexity of what you're talking about.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mayor, Mayor Klein?
Sure, and I'll second what the vice mayor said, that was part of what I was going to say. To me, it's critical to start the study, and I understand, you know, from a cost, from an implementation cost, it's now far outstripped what you originally thought was the, going to be the cost of this project. That being said, until we kick off the study, until we finalize the study, we don't know what solutions will be, you know, will be implemented from a Sunnyvale standpoint. And what's also critical here is the Moffett Park or the Moffett Airfield, you know, it's an active air force base, there's, it's not just Sunnyvale's problem, and I was a little disappointed when, you know, we became part of Phase 3, because ultimately, from an Army Corps of Engineers standpoint, you know, making sure that Moffett Field is fully operational and dealing with any issues with sea level rise, to me, is in the federal government's best interest. And I understand, you know, from your staff standpoint, it's been a difficult road with malt, with so many jurisdictions in working with the federal government. I've talked with Congressman Kana multiple times on this, there was some, there were some letters written earlier in the year doing advocacy as far as that's concerned. I don't think that anything made it into the infrastructure bill, but that's still in limbo, of course. But that being said, I do, you know, want to figure out how we move this forward, how we at least start this. Ultimately, from a study standpoint, and, you know, I understand, you are focused on how we complete Phase 1 and, you know, get that in the ground, because construction costs still continue to rise. That being said, you have Phase 2, Phase 3, that also construction costs are continuing to rise, and until things are studied, we don't know what mitigations we conceivably, and we talked about Moffett Park, could make it as, from a cost standpoint, additional development that goes in Moffett Park, how that would conceivably fund the requirements for this shoreline sea level rise mitigation. And so, you know, those items are tied together, so the sooner that it gets studied on what we, what can be implemented, and what's the consensus on what needs to be implemented to make sure that our residents are safe, that our businesses are safe, it's only, it only makes it that much more difficult to say, okay, here's the ultimate cost, and here's what we conceivably might ask our businesses to add into. So I'll just throw that out there. Thank you for that work, and if there's additional advocacy that needs to be done, you know, whether or not it's local advocacy, advocacy in DC, please make that clear to our Sunnyvale staff, to me, to our council members. But thank you for the hard work, and thank you for the update.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to express, you know, the same concern, you know, in the past, we have been pretty successful with getting some of our private partners involved in advocating for these projects, especially this one, you know, we did have a number of executives that joined us in Washington DC a number of years ago to support a couple of our projects, including this one. We were pretty much, you know, pretty successful. So I think, you know, we need to continue to do that, and we need to ask our private partners to be involved. This area, as we all know, not preaching to the choir here, you know, have the largest companies on the planet that are right there on shoreline, who have obviously a global commitment to this community, but also have the same challenges and are facing some of the same issues that we are. So I think we need to involve them a little bit more than we have in the past, and I think that they will be very helpful with us in advocating when we work with our DC advocates. So I think we need to consider that, and we certainly will work with the city, with our council partners and the mayor, and see what we can do to move this project further along.
And if it takes, you know, basically another going to DC, I'd be happy to be part of that advocacy trip, because I do think, at the end of the day, you know, it is figuring out from a federal standpoint, and not that things can't be done at a state, county, or city level as far as this is concerned, but this is a bigger issue, you know, California drives the economy, and some of those companies in, you know, Sunnyvale is the meeting place for companies, large and small, to a large degree, and it's only in everyone's best interest that this area, as well as the airfield itself, is protected. So thank you.
Great. Now I'd.
Mr. Chair, excuse me. Councilmember Melton had his hand.
Oh, yes, Councilwoman Melton.
Yeah, thank you. I also just wanted to rise and express just how important I feel this topic is. I think I feel the same sense of urgency that the Valley Water Board does on this matter, and that my two colleagues have already spoken, Vice Mayor Hendricks and Mayor Klein. I feel like have everybody the same level of a sense of urgency, but there's just no way I could meet the eloquence already spoken by Mayor Klein and you, Chair, and Vice Mayor Hendricks on all of this. And, you know, at the kickoff of this particular agenda item, CEO Calendar said, you know, it's going to be an all-hands-on-deck thing where even our local partners, for example, the city of Sunnyvale, have to, you know, help move all of this forward to the solution. And it was easy to predict that there's a financial component, but I think Mayor Klein and you, Chair, also hit on federal-level advocacy. And, you know, I would be of the opinion, I know Mayor Klein would do a great job in advocacy in Washington, because I've seen him do it with my own eyes when we've been out there together, but this is sort of all hands on deck, and the more board members, the more council members that can be advocating and pushing on multiple fronts, this topic is that important. And so Chair, I know you'll lead Valley Water in this, and Mayor Klein, I know you'll lead Sunnyvale. It's not just on your shoulders, Larry, this topic is important enough that, you know, when the time comes to spread the load and push on multiple fronts, it's that important. So thank you very much.
Yes.
We have Councilmember Larson and CEO Calendar that both have their hands raised.
Oh, yes. Councilwoman Larson?
If CEO Calendar would like to respond to Councilmember Melton, I think it would be appropriate.
Okay, all right. Rick?
Thank you for the chair, and I want to thank Councilmember Melton for his comments, as well as Mayor Klein. And I don't want to leave the council thinking that I was talking about the partnership was a financial partnership. I think what I'm talking about is exactly what Mayor Klein described. We need your help in lobbying, we need your help in supporting this project, and we need your help in moving this forward. We'll continue to fight, we'll continue to seek the funds for, the funds I believe are out there, but we can't get to the funds by ourselves. You know, we can, we'll go in and we'll try to do some of the heavy lifting, but I think your voices, your local voices, as our chair had talked about, some of these corporate voices that would be involved are really what's needed, so we really do need your policy-level support in making this go.
Yeah, Councilwoman Larson?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, CEO Calendar, for clarifying the support that would be most helpful to Valley Water. And I just wanted to touch briefly on the cost escalations on Phase 1, just to understand a little bit better what the drivers were, and really what I'm getting to is, like, what takeaways from that do we have so that we can have, better refine our estimates for Phase 2 and Phase 3, because I think it's going to be important as we do advocate to have a clear number in mind. And I realize there can be many different reasons for escalations, but to the extent that we've refined our process, that would be great to hear about.
Sure, through the chair, I can ask you this question? It is the cost of the engineered levee fill material. Originally, during the feasibility study of Phase 1, it was that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service was able to procure material at a very low cost, nearly free, and that was used as the basis, that that material continued. However, as we moved forward with Phase 1 and through the permitting process, the Corps of Engineers has a very strict engineering requirement for that fill, as well as the regional board has some strict quality placement requirements when that fill meets the water. So as it turns out, this fill is almost having to be made to meet those specifications, and it is coming out to close to $50 to $70 a cubic yard price tag for the fill material. So our staff has been busy touring in San Mateo County, Gloucester City area, how they've implemented their projects, to see what their price tags are and what they're doing, because building levees may not be the way to go. In Gloucester City, they're doing a combination of levees, sheet pile walls, and it may take, you know, different kind of thinking in the future for the remaining shoreline lengths, that it's not all fill. It's not all fill to bring up these levees from an average of 8 to 10 feet to needed 15-foot height. It may be some fill in combination with sheet pile walls, you know. So, but the biggest driver really is procuring the engineered fill, as well as this project in Phase 1 proposed what we called an ecotone, a horizontal-type living levee that allows for not only wetland features, but special status species to be able to migrate up and down with the ebb and flow of the tide and to adapt to sea level rise. That fill also is, has become very expensive. So doing a 30-to-1 slope, which is about 300 feet out into some of these ponds, is, you know, not really realistic any longer. So it's re-engineering or redesigning how those ecotones need to be built to lower that amount of build required to enter these ponds, you know, to help buffer and protect the levees once they're built, as well as, you know, maybe the levees just can't be as high because you have to incorporate a short flood wall or sheet pile wall into them as well.
Thank you, I appreciate the detailed answer and sort of the window into the complexities that you have to deal with on the project. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Nobody else.
Okay, so, let's see, thank you all for the discussion, there's no motion required on this informational item, and so I'll ask Mayor Klein for any closing remarks that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Chair Estramera. I just want to thank the Valley Water Board Directors and their staff for this meeting. I also want to thank, you know, our city manager and Sunnyvale city staff, as well as my colleagues for, you know, the hard work in, you know, in what we've done today as far from a discussion standpoint, as far as updating everyone else. And, you know, as we, as we all know, you know, having clean, safe, reliable water is critical for the Bay Area and for all of California, but especially for our Santa Clara Valley, you know. It's critical that our two organizations are in sync, and the working partnership is critical to make us both more successful, you know, making sure that we're on the same page, making sure that what we need to do from an advocacy standpoint, from an implementation standpoint, helps break down any of those barriers that we come across in making, in moving towards that final conclusion of what we want for Moffett Park as far as sea level rise, as far as, you know, dealing with all the issues in getting clean water and enough clean water that we, that it's not an issue in the Bay Area, and especially in the valley here. But hopefully, meetings like this will help continue to improve this. So thank you again for this joint meeting, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Klein. Wanted, of course, to thank the mayor and city council members for, and also, of course, your staff and ours for this great meeting and our great discussions this evening. You know, I'm always so proud when we show our constituents what true government is, you know, when local government is engaged like we are with partners. We work together on our projects. We share our constituents and therefore share, you know, their hopes and dreams. And we work on these projects together, and we solve their problems. I'm always so proud when we have these kinds of meetings where we also show our constituents what the difference is in government and how important it is for them to also be involved to support us and to work closely with us. So thank all of you, and we, let's see, I'll have the mayor adjourn their meeting, and then I will after.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned. I want to thank everyone for participating in a joint meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. There is a member of the public that has raised their hand. Would you like to?
Sure. Sure.
Sure. Ms. Agita Dev?
Yes. Ms. Dev?
Thank you so much. I did not mean to be at the very last speaker. I apologize.
Not a problem.
I didn't raise my hand in time. Thank you very much for the information. Rochelle's explanation was very poignant. And I do want to point out that there have been some, I do want to point out that we cannot ignore the ecology and health of the bay itself as we look at solutions. I know that Rochelle pointed out that some of the longer levees will be expensive, and that is certainly the case. However, what we don't want to end up with is basically with everyone putting sheet pile levees up, sheet pile walls up, so that what we end up with is basically a bathtub and not a bay with living shorelines. Critical to the ecological health of the bay is the living shorelines. We lost 90% of it. We're trying to get up to a certain amount. We're nowhere near there yet. So part of our solutions as we confront sea level rise has to be keeping the bay alive and healthy for, otherwise, it's a dead body of water. A bathtub is not a bay. So this is a really difficult problem, and I appreciate the conversation around it. I don't want you to think that when Foster City raises its levees using sheet piles, that that's a good thing. The studies that Stanford has done, other universities have done, and SPUR had a webinar on it just yesterday, that when one city raises walls to prevent water coming into their area, it affects other cities around the bay. If San Jose were to do that, if we were to do that in the South Bay, it would affect Napa. So this is a regional problem. The living shorelines are a crucial part of the solution, crucial part of the solution. Putting up a wall, building concrete walls or sheet pile walls is not going to help us. We may do that, you know, for one mile and affect 10 miles in other areas where the water will go. So it's really important to come up with nature-based adaptations rather than walls. And the Army Corps is coming to that point of view. In Moffett Park, we've pointed out that using the wetlands as flood retention allows us to tap into different sources of revenue. There are different sources of revenue and credits that FEMA gives, that the federal government gives, that the Army Corps will now give for nature-based solutions, which benefit both nature and people. I wanted to bring that to our attention as we close this session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dev. Thank you for all your comments this evening. You've been very helpful. Appreciate your participation. All right, so we'll adjourn to 1:00 PM on a closed session on October 12th, followed by a public session thereafter. Thank you again, and good evening to everyone. Please be safe.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Good evening.